Today, February 8th, 2021, I will read the public charge. The Board of County Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow citizens. At any time, should any member of the Board or any citizen fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will ask recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. I believe I'm going to ask Commissioner Burns if you will recite the pledge for Isaiah this evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. Commissioners, are there any agenda adjustments? Hearing none, we will move on to announcements, and we're asked our Clerk, Monica Tumer, if she will read the announcements.
Good evening, Commissioners. I will move forward with reading the announcements for this evening. The COVID-19 vaccine waitlist information. Due to the limited supply of COVID-19 vaccines from the state, the Durham County Department of Public Health has temporarily closed its vaccine scheduling process. Citizens are encouraged to sign up for the waitlist if additional vaccine doses become available. Please note, citizens will not be able to sign up unless your group is being vaccinated. To find your group, please visit www.findmygroup.nc.gov. Sorry. Could you guys hear me? I apologize.
Yes.
Okay.
Good work.
Sign up for the English waitlist, please visit www.tinyurl.com/DCOvaccineWaitlist. And to sign up in Spanish, please visit www.tinyurl.com/DCOLISTAVACUNAS. Our MBK Durham Network Call. My Brothers Keeper Durham is hosting a network call on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. To participate, please call 515-604-9725, conference code 441013. MPO Feedback, I'm sorry, MPO Plan Feedback. Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization has released the draft public involvement policy and limited English proficiency plan for public comment period. The public comment period ends on Wednesday, February 10th. To share comments, please visit www.dchcmpo.org. Transition to NC Medicaid Managed Care. Enrollment opens on March 15th, 2021, for NC Medicaid Managed Care. Clients will have the opportunity to choose from five healthcare plans instead of just the one Medicaid program. Interested citizens are asked to contact their county social services caseworker for more details or visit www.ncgov servicenowservices.com. Helping Durham County Seniors. We need your help with assisting seniors by volunteering through the Triangle Nonprofit and Volunteer Leadership Center. Organizations that need your help include A Helping Hand, Durham Center for Senior Life, and Meals on Wheels, just to name a few. Please visit www.handsontriangle.org to sign up. Your feedback is needed. The City-County Planning Department is ready to present the initial results of input through its draft community objectives. Please visit www.durhammysocialpinpoint.com/comprehensiveplan now through February 19th to share your feedback on the draft community objectives. For additional information about the new comprehensive plan, please contact City-County Planning Department Senior Planner Lisa Miller at 919-560-4137, extension 28270. Innovate Durham 2021. A partnership between the City of Durham, Durham County, and Durham Public Schools that allows entrepreneurs to use local government as a laboratory to test products and ideas is now available, I'm sorry, is now accepting applications until February 15th, 2021. Please visit and apply online at www.tinyurl.com/innovatirdurham2021application. Need help paying your heating bill? Beginning January 2nd through March 31st, the Low Energy, I'm sorry, Low Income Energy Assistance Program will open to all Durham County residents. Residents are asked to visit www.epass.nc.gov to view eligibility criteria and apply for the program. Summer 2021 Paid Internship Program. Congressman David E. Price is now accepting applications for an undergraduate student who is interested in government or the legislative process for his Durham and Washington offices. The application deadline for the Summer 2021 Internship Program is March 5th. For questions regarding the internship, please email nc04 intern at mail.house.gov or call 202-225-1784. Subscribe to Durham This Week Online Newsletter. Did you know that each week, the Durham County Manager's Office releases a newsletter titled Durham This Week Online that provides updates on county services, news items, video releases, job listings, and much more? Plus, each week, County Manager Wendell Davis writes a note for the community on a variety of subjects for our community. And lastly, honoring Black History Month. Each February, Black History Month is observed to highlight and honor the significant achievements made by African-Americans in our nation. The noted historian Carter G. Woodson is credited with establishing this celebration, which first started in 1926 as a week-long observance. Beginning in 1976, our president designated February as a Black History Month and included a specific theme. This year's theme is the Black Family: Representation, Identity, and Diversity. Let's celebrate this important observance and support the various related programs taking place this month. And at this time, I would like to introduce Nori McDuffie, Project Assistant to the City of Durham Office on Youth, to share a Black History Month tribute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nori McDuffie. I'm the Project Assistant for the City of Durham Office on Youth, and I feel so honored and appreciative to be in this space with you all this evening. Thank you so much for having me. This evening, I will be reading a poem by Elizabeth Alexander, praise song for the day. Elizabeth Alexander is an American poet, essayist, and playwright. She also had the wonderful opportunity to recite the poem, praise song for the day, at President, former President Barack Obama's first presidential inauguration. I chose this poem for two reasons. Firstly, because it's a reminder of what Black History Month is. Secondly, it aligns with my personal beliefs. Black History Month serves as a reminder for us to celebrate Black excellence all year long, that we should continuously acknowledge, bring into light all of our awe-inspiring, extraordinary ancestors, recognizing their brilliance, their wisdom, invitation, and magic, and innovation and magic. As Elizabeth Alexander says in her poem, "Love that castes a winding pool of light." Love should be the moving force behind all of our thoughts and actions. Loving someone and bringing them into light allows them to be the whole happiest and healthiest selves. It gives room for growth and creativity. Not only does Black History Month bring those into light who came before us, but also celebrates those who exist now and their descendants. It recognizes their brilliance, wisdom, innovation, and magic. And now, Ms. Alexander's poem, praise song for the day. Each day, we go about our business, walking past each other, catching each other's eyes or not, about to speak or speaking. All about us is noise. All about us is noise and bramble, thorn and din, each one of our ancestors on our tongues. Someone is stitching up a hem, darning a hole in a uniform, patching attire, repairing the things in need of repair. Someone is trying to make music somewhere, with a pair of wooden spoons on an oil drum, with cello, boombox, harmonica, voice. A woman and her son wait for the bus. A farmer considers the changing sky. A teacher says, "Take out your pencils, begin." We encounter each other in words, words spiny or smooth, whispered or declaimed, words to consider, reconsider. We cross dirt roads and highways that mark the will of someone and then others, who said, "I need to see what's on the other side. I know there's something better down the road. We need to find a place where we are safe." We walk into that which we cannot yet see. Say it plain, that many have died for this day, sing the names of the dead who brought us here, who laid the train tracks, raised the bridges, picked the cotton and the lettuce, built brick by brick the glittering edifices. They would then keep clean and work inside of. Praise song for struggle, praise song for the day, praise song for every hand-lettered sign, the figuring it out at kitchen tables. Some live by "Love thy neighbor as thyself; others, by first do no harm or take no more than you need." What if the mightiest word is love? Love beyond marital, filial, national. Love that casts a widening pool of light, love with no need to preempt grievance. In today's sharp sparkle, this winter air, anything can be made, any sentence begun, on the brink, on the brim, on the cusp. Praise song for walking forward in that light. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McDuffie. And Chair Howerton, that concludes our announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Monica, so much, and thank you, Ms. McDuffie. Thank you for an incredible, incredible poem. I am so honored that you accepted our invitation to give us words this evening, and I am just so proud of you. Commissioners, want to give you an opportunity to, if you have comments. Commissioner Alom.
Madam Chair, this isn't an announcement, but just a point of personal privilege to let you know, I'm going to probably be off-camera for this meeting. I unfortunately suffered a concussion this morning, so I have to stay off-screen, so I'm just going to be dialed in.
Well, we pray that you'll be fine, that you'll be okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Alom? Let me, Commissioner Burns?
I just want to say, this is the second time that Mr. McDuffie has come before us, and as always, I'm pleased as punch to have our young people to just come forward and be willing to do a poem and to acknowledge our Black History Month. I think sometimes some people take for granted because it comes around every year, and we fail to recognize that Carter G. Woodson went to the mat for Black History Week and Black History Month, so that we can sit here, and we can acknowledge it, and we can take it in. And so for me, it does my spirit good to see somebody much younger than me taking it very seriously, taking it very earnestly, and choosing a poem that spoke to each one of our hearts. So again, Ms. McDuffie, I tell you, each time you come here, I have high expectations. So you keep doing well, you know, I'm just going to keep being harder on you, so thank you, and you be harder on the person that's 10 years younger than you or 20 years younger than you, because what we don't want to do is have Black History Month go away, as our Lieutenant Governor would like to see it go away. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobs, I thought, did I see your hand?
Yes, I just also wanted to thank Mr. McDuffie for bringing that to us, and it really struck me how also poetry and art can say things that, you know, maybe just talking about a specific person, like we sometimes do with Black History, how it's can be even more powerful, like we just heard with the poet laureate at the Biden Administration inauguration. But I also found myself with that poem, it just felt even more poignant to do with COVID, the things that we have been missing, that you were talking about in your poem as well. So thank you so much for bringing, bringing that back to us, and the preciousness of also each person and all of the history that is embodied within each person. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. You know, Black History Month is, you know, there's so much wrapped up in that one month. We talk about the history of Black and African-Americans around social justice, education, you name it, inventions, there are so, there's so much there that sometimes it seems insulting that we are, it's only celebrated one month, and I think it's to be a celebration all the time of what is given to this country. And again, Mr. McDuffie, thank you so much. We will move on. Minutes, Commissioner, we have, the Board has before you the January 25th and the 27th regular session minutes for approval. Were there any comments or additions? If none, I will accept a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minute.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Burns, second by, who made the second?
I did.
Commissioner Alom, you just can't see her.
Commissioner Alom?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
She's still there.
I'm still with you.
Thank you. It's been moved and second, and we'll have a roll call vote by the Clerk.
Commissioner Alom.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Yes.
And Chair Howerton?
Yes. So it's been motion, minutes have been approved, five to zero. Thank you. Now Commissioners, we have ceremonial item. Tonight, we have an item, which is Durham County's proclamation to establish a new county holiday in recognition of Juneteenth. And I will read the proclamation. It's a little bit long, but we will, it is so important that we do this. So proclamation establish a new county holiday in recognition of June 10th, 2021. Whereas on June 22nd, 2020, Commissioner Howerton recommended that Durham County Government recognize Juneteenth as an official holiday for county employees honoring the historical significance of the emancipation of the last remaining enslaved Black and African-Americans in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the events of June 19th, 1865, when Major Warden Ranger led Union soldiers into Galveston, Texas, bringing news that the Civil War had ended and that the Emancipation Proclamation had declared all enslaved people were free nearly two and a half years earlier. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation changed the legal status under federal law of nearly 3.5 million enslaved Black and African-Americans, and the subsequent 13th Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America abolished slavery and involuntary servitude. And whereas Juneteenth acknowledges the considerable lapse over a two-year period from 1863 to 1865, where enslaved Blacks and African-Americans remained in bondage and unaware of the Emancipation Proclamation issued by President Abraham Lincoln that recognized and maintained the freedom of slaves in the United States. Whereas the celebration of Juneteenth is believed to be the oldest Black and African-American holiday observance in our nation, and takes place annually throughout Durham, North Carolina, and the nation, often consisting of readings of the Emancipation Proclamation, prayer and worship services, family gatherings, cultural performances, educational activities, community service events, ceremonia, observances, and more. And whereas in 1997, during the 155th United States Congress House Joint Resolution 56th and Senate Joint Resolution 11 were passed, officially recognizing Juneteenth Independence Day on August 23rd, 2007. Juneteenth National Freedom Day was recognized by the State of North Carolina, and Juneteenth has been celebrated in Durham, North Carolina since 1933. And whereas, as July 4th, 1977, represents the birth of the United States of America and commemorates the United States' independence from British rule, it did not offer independence and freedom to enslaved people. And whereas historically, Juneteenth observance have not always received acknowledgement and recognition through Juneteenth, is a critical component of American history, and it marks a turning point in our nation and a step towards equality. And whereas Juneteenth is a stark reminder of the promises of liberation for Black and African-Americans in the 21st century, currently, our nation, and indeed our Durham community, is experiencing racial injustices and inequities at a record pace, demonstrating that despite great successes and achievements, Black and African-Americans continue to bear the pain and burden of systemic racism and despair treatment at every turn. And whereas Juneteenth is also known as Emancipation Day, Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, celebration of liberation, and Juneteenth Independence Day, and Juneteenth augments the nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the strength and resolve of Black and African-Americans throughout our history, and serves as an opportunity to celebrate the rich and numerous celebrate contributions of Black and African-Americans to the Durham community. And the United States and Juneteenth teaches our youth the importance of honoring Black and African-American history and the impact of the institution of cattle slavery. And whereas Durham community, Durham County seeks to establish a paid holiday for county employees commencing June 19th, 2021, and forth, calling them to observance. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners believes establishing an annual observance would give employees and residents of Durham County an official holiday on which to reflect on the impact of slavery, while also providing a time to remember the contributions of the enslaved of the fiber of Durham County. And whereas an official Juneteenth holiday would also signal that Durham County is committed to doing the work to identify and improve policies and processes that will improve access to opportunities for all employees and work to eliminate any vengeance of unequal treatment that exists in this organization. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda Howerton, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, and on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Juneteenth to be an official Durham County Government paid holiday for employees. Be it therefore resolved that the official observance of the Juneteenth will commence in the year 2021, which will mark the 156th communication of, commemoration of Juneteenth, this 8th day of February, 2021.
A long one.
Thank you.
Chair Howerton, I would like to state that we have Ricky Stevenson on the line, along with Gloria De Los Santos on the line.
Thank you. Thank you. So if Stevenson would like to speak?
Yes ma'am, Commissioner Howerton, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all once again. Thank you for the work that you all do for Durham. You all, many of you attended the Community Forum for Black People of Color discussing racial inequities, and I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you again today about the adoption of Juneteenth as a holiday. So with the importance of Juneteenth being a holiday, I wanted to just share some brief statements that I prepared. The importance of Juneteenth needs to be highlighted in our community more prominently. As a local teacher, I can attest to the need to increase awareness on matters of racial equity and eliminating systemic racism. Thus, as we seek to create a society that actively is important that or adding a holiday to the calendar, our resilience of our community members. Adopting Juneteenth as a holiday is more than giving a day off or adding a holiday to the calendar. Juneteenth recognition in Durham tells the world, we recognize that past and are committed to improving our efforts towards instilling equity and equality in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Do we have another, anyone else? Monica?
My apologies Chair Howerton, we were having a little technical issue in the chambers. I apologize. We, I'm sorry Gloria De Los Santos?
I'm here. Thank you Commissioner Howerton and Commissioner Ladies, how y'all doing this evening? On behalf of Action N C Rage Members Statewide Organization, we want to thank you for passing this proclamation. We also would like to thank, as my colleague said, Ricky, she's a part of our organization as well, want to thank you again deeply and share the reasonings why we think it's really important for this proclamation to be passed. For me, it's more personal. Growing up in South Carolina, I did not hear anything about Juneteenth until I went to college. Like so many others, we weren't taught a lot about slavery nor the emancipation of freed slaves. The passing of this proclamation shows the unity that we have here in Durham. It's such a tone for other cities and counties and states in North Carolina to do the same thing. Because we are recognizing this, it also recognizes that we have a lot of work to do as well. With the recent altercation, altercations in our communities of color, demonstrations against police brutality and police killing African Americans, and growing recognizing systematic racism in our nation, and institutional racism as well, Juneteenth was brought to the forefront. The importance, the importance of this resolution and possibly importance of this resolution, Juneteenth as a paid holiday for county employees is to commemorate the emancipation of slaves in the United States. It also, I would also like to occur with my colleague Ricky, that it shows how to dismantle racism in our communities of color. And not only that, it shows the unity that we can be doing, this can be done in our school systems as well. The passing of this proclamation not only is a commemoration, but it starts the healing of deep rooted racist history in Americans, Americans' culture and ideology. As a community, we must dig deeper and deeper until those roots are rooted out. Even though the passing of this resolution is wonderful, it starts to dismantle the, dismantle and recognize what we have a lot, recognize that we have a lot of work to do to destroy centuries of deep seated racism that probes our communities of color. Again, I want to thank you Commissioner Howerton and the women, Commissioner Women, for passing this proclamation. And let's make this the start of healing, healing the racial oppression that affects communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Santos. I'd like to, before we have the Commissioners speak, I want to thank Quilly Henry, the county's racial equity officer, Joanne Pierce, GMs, Deborah Craig Ray, both general managers, and Kathy Everett Perry, the HR Director, for helping to establish this proclamation and its recognition for Durham County. So if they have comments? So either, go ahead. We can't hear you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to just weigh in on this momentous occasion. We, you know, took the charge seriously and believe that this proclamation will really give a strong message to our community about the importance of righting historical wrongs. And I think the opportunity to reflect and commemorate and honor our ancestors annually is a tremendous step forward. So just truly appreciate all of the support and I think this will signal a lot towards our efforts to advance racial equity and again, right historical wrongs. So I turn it over to my colleagues for any additional comments.
I do not have any, but thank you.
I'd just like to thank everyone on the committee. I think we worked well together. We had a common purpose. We knew it was important to our community. And so again, we're just happy that we have brought something that's acceptable to you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, any comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, Commissioner Alom?
Yeah, I just want to
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to take a moment to appreciate also Commissioner Burns in her edit to this resolution that, this proclamation initially, you know, we mentioned that it was Juneteenth, but she really emphasized the significance that though Juneteenth is a historic date, it was two years before all enslaved people knew that they were actually free. So thank you Commissioner Burns for holding this accountable and making sure that that was included in the proclamation.
Yes.
Thank you.
I did, I did want to throw in, thank you Commissioner Alom, I do appreciate that. I also want to thank all five, you know, thank you to Madam Chair for bringing this forward. Thank you to the other Commissioners for being open to it. Thank you for the staff being open to it. This was for the community, I need you all to understand, this was not a heavy lift on behalf of this board. It might have been a heavy lift getting everything together and doing the finances and finding the numbers, and we realized that we could do it, but recognize that this was, this was not hard to get everybody on the same page about this initiative. So I did want to point that out. And lastly, I will say, you know, I don't want to be the Commissioner that tells you what to do with your day off, but I often tell people the same way we treat MLK, it is not a day off, it is a day on. And so I am hopeful, like Commissioner Alom pointed out, this, it did take this long. So we all know that change takes time. So in the spirit of, you know, Martin Luther King's birthday, and people often say it's not a day off, it's a day on, I just want you all to think about, a quick sentence of his, everybody can serve, I mean, everybody can be great because everybody can serve. So I'm hopeful that you take this time on this day and figure out how you can put good into the world. That's all I ask.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Jacobs?
Well Commissioner Burns and I were on the same wavelength tonight because she basically said what I was going to say. But I do want to, it's an, I really want to thank the staff who worked on this because it's, it's a really excellent resolution. It's, you know, sometimes our resolutions are really important because they capture all of the history and give all the background information and are also just really, really informative. And so I think that this, this proclamation is really important in the way it's written. So thank you to everyone who contributed to that. And it can really be a learning tool for, you know, for schools, for our students, our classrooms. And I agree with what Commissioner Alom said, I was thinking about how one, I don't want to create more work for our staff, but you know, we just had our MLK celebration that the city and the county do, and it is exciting. I mean Durham has, you know, people have been celebrating Juneteenth in Durham ever since I've lived here for 40 years. So, you know, people have been doing things, but just to think about, it's exciting to think about the possibilities now that the city and the county have both officially made it a holiday. And to your point Commissioner Burns, we actually, we're going to act on this right away December, but we did wait, hold off because I know that Commissioner Howerton wanted to pursue some things at the state, state level. So that, that was never an issue on this board at all. But I'm excited to see it move forward now, and I think it is meaningful to do it during this month as well. So it's exciting that we all get to be a part of it together. Thank you.
Commissioner Carter, please?
Well in addition to agreeing with everyone, I'm going to like shoot off some fireworks now so it will feel even more celebratory. It felt like we needed to do that at the conclusion of the reading, which I agree is an excellent resolution. I really want to take a moment to especially thank Ricky Stevenson and Gloria De Los Santos for your really moving comments as well. For me, this holiday is a really small example of how much I don't know about history and need to learn. I wasn't taught about Juneteenth in school and didn't know about it until I was an adult. And I don't think I taught my own children about it. It was even, my children were older, you know, but when I learned about it. And that's really a shame. And so I'm just looking at this as an example of how important Black history is and the current books that we have had in the past have created an alternative history and not all of it is accurate and it's left out many truths. So going forward, hopefully the state of North Carolina is improving its standards for history. And we here in Durham County will be doing all that we can to lift up history and celebrations like this and also doing our work to root out all systems of white supremacy and oppression. I know that we as Commissioners are certainly thinking about that every time we make a policy decision, you know, what will the impact be on, on racial equity? And that will continue to guide our work. Thank you.
Thanks to all my Commissioners. This is an extraordinary event for us to put forward and we had been, Gloria and I had been working with Senator Murdoch to try and get it pushed at the state level and we decided that we needed to go ahead with it here in Durham and maybe we can do it later at the state, but right now, we just need to take care, take care of it here at home. So thank you. Moving, moving along with our agenda, next Commissioner, we have our consent agenda. We have 18 items on our consent agenda. Item 21086 is the only new addition. All other items were discussed during the February work session. Are there any other, any that Commissioners would like to pull for discussion under agenda item, other than agenda item 11? If there are any comments, we could, you could ask them at this point. Or we can pull them at the end. If, if there are none, I will ask the manager if he will go through our consent items.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair. Item 0018 is a budget ordinance amendment recognizing $8,540 from the Department of Health and Human Services for our Public Health Department, the LTAT branch. Is the approval of a contract with WK Dickerson for nutrient management. Item 0029 is a capital project amendment increasing our convenience sites upgrades in the amount of $3.6 million. Item 0038 is a budget ordinance amendment recognizing funds in the amount of $43,657 from the Department of Health and Human Services for our Women's and Children's Health Section and Immunization Branch. Item 0042 is a budget ordinance amendment recognizing $150 from the Department of Health and Human Services for cancer prevention. Item 0044 is a budget ordinance amendment recognizing $99,949 from Health and Human Services for our Immunization Branch in the Public Health Department. Item 0047 is another budget ordinance amendment in the amount of $168,525 for our housing opportunities with, for persons with AIDS, for what they contract with the City of Durham. Item 0050 is approval of the budget ordinance amendment appropriating $150,000 of general fund fund balance for our Durham Convention Center. Item 0054 is the approval of the budget ordinance amendment appropriating $186,394.99 for the padded cells project at the county's detention center. Item 0060 is the approval and contract of E Plus to conduct routine life cycle replacement for our telework technology. Item 0061 is the approval of a contract with SHI International to purchase cyber specific license to strengthen our security associated with Microsoft. Item 0062 is the approval to amend the contract with Insight Global LLC for our technical writer contractor in IT. Item 0064 is the approval of the budget for the Trails Ends Open Space Acquisition and to approve a capital project amendment. And that's essentially in the amount of $31,969, which effectively is a transfer and will also recognize $40,000 from the general fund. Items 0065 is also a capital project amendment increasing a capital project budget for 300 East Main Street redevelopment project using $44,950 in LOBS funding. Items 0069 is the execution of the design contract with O'Brien Atkins for the Detention Center Security Glass Replacement Project. Item 0072 is a budget ordinance amendment appropriating general fund restricted fund balance in the amount of $1.8553,393.16 for the Sheriff Public Health Library, our Criminal Justice Partnership Program as well as social services. Items 0075 is an amendment to the Durham County Women's Commission bylaws. Items zero-zero-eight-four is the advertisement of the twenty-twenty tax liens on real property. Items zero-zero-eight-six is the approval of the budget ordinance amendment transferring four-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars across functional areas in the, uh, budget to, um, formalize funding decisions that we made at our January twenty-fifth meeting. Madam Chairman, that concludes, uh, our consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, if there are no items to be pulled, I'll accept a motion for approval.
I move for approval of the consent agenda items.
And, uh, second?
Second.
So, it's been moved by Commissioner Jacobs and second by Commissioner Burns to approve the consent items. Uh, I will have a roll call by the clerk, please.
Commissioner Lam?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
I guess I need to say aye. Everyone's saying aye.
And Commissioner Howerton?
Aye. Um, consent agenda has been approved by five to zero. And just for the public, we have some incredible things on this consent agenda that have been approved, that we go over during our work session. Um, and if we went over them again tonight, we'd be here probably till wee hours of the morning. And I don't think commissioners are engaged with me on that one. So, uh, thank you so much that we will-
Who didn't mind it?
Who said that?
The commissioner you can't see.
Yeah, little, let's just pull something, Commissioner Lam.
I'm just gonna say clearly something has, clearly something's gone to Commissioner Lam's head.
So, the next item is we have a public hearing.
Commissioners?
Um, this is a public hearing on our agenda to consider allocating economic development funds to, ever, 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 um, Lauren. We have Andy Miracle, the Economic Development Officer, just popped up there, a resource person on this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, Andy Miracle, Durham County Economic Development Officer. Uh, please let me know if we're having, uh, any connectivity issues on my end. I can turn my video off or get on the phone if need be.
Okay.
So, the board has requested to hold a public hearing to consider allocating a total of six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars to Advaram and authorize the county manager to enter into preliminary negotiations and execute an agreement with the company. The company, which specializes in gene therapy production, will locate in Durham County, creating two-hundred-and-two jobs and investing eighty-two-point-eight million dollars. Advaram Biotechnologies is a clinical-stage gene therapy company targeting unmet medical needs and serious ocular and rare diseases. Based in Redwood City, California, the company is developing its lead gene therapy candidate and ongoing clinical trials for wet age-related macular degeneration and diabetic macular edema. The gene therapy candidate, candidate is administered as a potential one-use injection for the treatment of ocular diseases that impact millions of patients worldwide. With approval of the award, the company has agreed to make reasonable efforts to participate in several workforce, workforce partnerships that include engagements with Durham Public Schools Career and Technical Education, Durham Technical Community College, and North Carolina Central University. Please find additional project details, including a full list of partnerships, terms, and project attributes in the briefing sheet attached to the agenda item. I will note, the company has outlined specific engagements related to college-level internships, Durham Public Schools CTE activities, as well as aspirational NWE participation goals. And we are looking forward to helping facilitate those partnerships in a successful manner. Advaram Biotechnologies' new presence in North Carolina will be facilitated in part by, by a job development investment grant approved by the state's Economic Investment Committee on January seventh. Payments for all J-Dig and local awards only occur following performance verification that the company has met its incremental job creation and investment targets. The anticipated revenue that the project will generate is at least twice the size of the proposed local award, and payment to the company occurs only after the annual verification of job and investment criteria, starting in twenty-twenty-two. Staff is recommending that the county provide six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars in economic development investment funds to Advaram, subject to performance goals being met by the company related to timing and amount of investment, employment creation, and maintenance of the created jobs, as well as partnership engagement criteria. The public hearing has been advertised as required by law. That concludes my comments. And I will note that we do have representatives from the company joining us tonight, uh, to make comments, and I can, uh, introduce them at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time? Commissioners, Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. Um, and Andy, I just had a question about, um, the briefing sheet in terms of the jobs, um, the qualifications for each of the levels of jobs. Um, you included master's degrees for all of them, and I just wanted to get clarity. I didn't know if that was maybe just a misprint. For instance, even the warehouse positions, it says, um, high school degree, GED, then it says master's degree. So, I did, I can, we just get clarification on what is the skill set that is required for each of those levels of jobs?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, uh, follow up to, to confirm that information if, if we're not able to, uh, confirm that with staff tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I did wanna say, I appreciate that you have included, um, some concrete, uh, deliverables related to some of the, um, you know, some of the priorities that we have in our policy, uh, with, you know, the four job fairs and three paid internships and, um, the, um, you know, minimum of two programs, and then also the MW, MWB goal of ten percent. Um, so I appreciate you moving towards getting, uh, very concrete, uh, deliverables on those. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I certainly wanna thank the, uh, the company for, for working with us through that process.
Any other commissioners have comments before our open public hearing? Okay, hearing done. I would, um, I will open the public hearing. Um, we have speakers, uh, Miracle, Andy, if you would like to introduce the, your other speakers?
Absolutely. Um, so I will, I will start by, uh, introducing, introducing Angela Fedinga, who is the Chief Technical Officer, to make her comments. And then, uh, she can also introduce the other speakers as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Miracle, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm Angela Fedinga, the Chief Technology Officer at Advaram. And I'd like to thank, first start by thanking the county commissioners for the opportunity to collaborate as we join the Durham Biotech community. At Advaram, we're a gene therapy company with the mission to develop one-time gene therapy treatments to preserve site for life. And our first candidate, ADVMO22, is currently in clinical trials for patients with wet age-related macular degeneration, as well as diabetic macular edema. The manufacturing site that we look to establish in Durham County will serve as the key commercial manufacturing site for ADVMO22. At Advaram, diversity and community are embedded in our culture. And we look forward to building partnerships based on the commitments that we've outlined in our engagement plan in the briefing document attached. We, as I mentioned, we have a strong commitment to diversity, um, in our hiring and our contracting and purchasing. And we show our commitments to the community, both through our environmental commitments and our commitments to education. So, I'd like to invite Hiki Otiarvi, our VP of Manufacturing and Supply Chain, to outline, um, our diversity and environment commitments. Um, and then Dina House, our VP of Human Relations, will further outline our partnerships in education, um, in the community.
Thank you, Angela. Um, good evening, Commissioners. It's an honor to be speaking here for, um, in front of you this evening. And, um, first, I kinda want to say that when we're thinking about significant investments in building our facility in Durham County, I can see that there's, uh, important business investment for Advaram. But it only goes halfway. The major investment, the most important investment that we want to make is really on Durham County. We want to become a valued member of the, of the county, and we want to continue investing on employment opportunities, hiring locally, and contracting locally. Because that's the only way, throughout my lengthy career, I've seen that you can really be successful in your business. You're part of the community. You're giving and you're getting. So, that is kind of my credo when, when I think about what we are going to do during the coming months and years. This is a long-term engagement, and we are taking the first steps. First steps, we are hiring locally. We have key positions that we fill. But, uh, after that, we will have a full two-hundred-plus people that we envision there. And it includes not only, um, it includes the, uh, the decrease that are, we, we are a high-tech company. We have, we have master's degrees, but absolutely, we have possessions that don't require advanced degrees. So, that will, the whole spectrum from, from vocational education all the way, of course, to the, um, post-trad decrease is something that we need. So, that's, uh, that's our commitment, that's our need, and that's what we want to bring there. Another, another very important factor for, for success there is that we are not only hiring locally, but we are contracting locally as well. And, um, when we are contracting, our target and commitment, of course, is that we have MWB contractors. We want to go above and beyond what we are committing. But, uh, we also need your help. We are new to the community, and I hope that we will have a continuous dialogue with commissioners and, of course, local organizations as well, how we can reach out and contract, uh, with diversity in our minds and, and again benefiting the community from that perspective. As, uh, as we are, we are starting this building project, we have a hundred and seventy-two thousand square feet. It's a beautiful building, but we will basically take the inside all the way down. It's what we are, what we want to do, not only to build the capability to do what Advaram is doing, but do that in the right way. So, environmental consciousness is something that is part of our, our fabric. And when I'm looking again from, with my backroom, when I'm looking at something, we want to stay there for twenty-five, thirty years. I want to build it to be, um, uh, for that timeframe and to meet the requirements that we have today, and not only today, but tomorrow. That comes to, um, to, uh, simple things like, uh, heating and cooling, effectiveness of that, divest management. We don't want to burden our community, which is Durham County, with something that we can manage in the best possible way at our factory. So, those are the little examples of what we are doing. We are building it from inside to the point that it's state-of-the-art facility and meeting the requirements that it sets for that. Finally, uh, another area where, uh, I think it's very important that, uh, we have engagement in the community is education. And, uh, our PP of HR, Dina House, will speak to that. I'm kind of moving it over to her, saying that the best, the, the, the best projects that I have been running have really been based on the apprenticeships, internships, interacting with the local educational institutions, because those are the people who will stay there. So, Dina, please take it over here.
Thank you, Hiki. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak with you tonight about the programs that we've already started to implement at Advaram that we wanna also bring over, but then also some of the plans that we have. Because we're a pretty new, 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 um, new phase in our business lifecycle as well. So, um, this is giving us a really exciting opportunity to put some really robust strategies in place. Um, kinda to start with, um, some of the things that we started that are helping us with the education and outreach in our current community is the implementation of our, our diversity, inclusion, and equality program at Advaram. And this program is really focused on three areas: education and transformation, and then also involvement. How do we get our employees involved? How do we get involved in our community? And so, some examples of things that we did this last year were, um, implementing holidays, um, like Juneteenth. Um, we're adding Caesar's shock of this day. And we also added a voting, you know, day off for voting so people can volunteer and be involved in the community and also have that opportunity to vote. It was super important to us that we provided that space. We also have started a lot of our outreach and, um, community organizations, organized our own virtual race, um, running, well, people can do whatever they wanted, race and running or hiking or et cetera. And that was really so that we can build, um, education and also fundraising, um, around a organization here, um, in the Bay Area that was for lawyers who were committed to the civil rights in our local area and really helping underrepresented organizations. And then through this diversity program, we've also re-looked at our recruiting strategy. It's really opened the doors for us to really, we start to think about where we're recruiting, how we're recruiting, who we're recruiting for. And so, we have partnered with an organization called One Ten Membership to, um, do a better outreach. Um, we are also looking at different trade events we can be part of. Um, we have really looked at, and this might help, Mr. Miracle, in sort of what we're doing with our, um, job requisitions, um, really re-looking at, um, how they're written and what their, what their purpose is for each job and really making sure that they are fully inclusive. And so, we do have positions currently, and we do plan on having positions that do not require a high school diploma, um, and that range from no degree, um, through high school, through vocational, um, apprenticeships, um, through maybe college and, um, extended degrees. So, we will have that full range, and we do currently, um, have that in our, um, structure. Other things that we're looking at are internships. We have had a few internships. COVID made it a little bit difficult this past year, um, but it is part of our program. And we're looking at how we can not only include an internship program, but a piece that's attached to that where the, um, students do some sort of, uh, paper or something at the end of it where they can share their learnings with the rest of the company, which is also very exciting for them and then exciting for us. These are also paid internships. We, um, have, uh, done some outreach with our local universities and wanna continue that partnership in Durham County as well, where we participate in job fairs, make sure we're doing postings there and have that outreach. Um, it's something we've done in previously, but not at Advaram, but that we wanna bring here are also summer programs or, and/or during the school season programs with the local teachers. Um, I know a lot of times it helps them stay, um, connected with what's happening in the industry. It helps us stay connected with what's happening in education and where some of the needs are that they, that we can help out with. So, being part of any advisory groups that you have in Durham County, um, is what we would wanna do and what we're trying to do here in the local community as well. Additional, um, programs that we've, um, been looking at are, uh, the local STEM programs for, um, the elementary schools, especially, um, there's some STEM programs here for girls, um, in STEM is what they call it through our local library system. So, we wanna be able to continue that in Durham. It sounds like you have that program as well. And then, um, programs where the students, high school students can come onsite and, um, do job shadowing, uh, work with the, you know, see what the day in the life at Advaram is and the different, um, parts of the organization from your lab to your GNA functions. Um, and, uh, from your lab to your GNA functions and clinical development groups. So we want to plan, you know, days like that. We've been partnering in the past with local high schools to do that. And then for universities, some things that we've been thinking about are, like, how can we help with resume writing and career days? And really do some, offer some support there with our employees to work with students, to help them as they are, you know, graduating and wanting help. How do I do a job search? How do I make myself stand out as I do that? So these are some of the areas that we've been thinking about planning, some that we've already implemented and that we're really excited to partner with you all, because it sounds like you have some really good organizations in Durham County that we can learn from and bring here as well in California. So, thank you. And with that, yes?
I tell you what, all three of you have got us wanting to stand up and go and applaud. You know, when you talk about becoming part of the community, that's important to Durham community that when you're coming in as a new business, that you're becoming a part of the community. And we thank you for that. And all these other things, when you talk about education, when you talk about the environment, there are just so many things that you have mentioned that speaks volume to this board. And I just want to say thank you for all those things. And I want to give my board an opportunity to see if they have any other questions or comments. I think I'm supposed to...
I have one, Commissioner Howerton.
I think I'm supposed to close a public hearing first.
Chair Howerton, I will like to state that we do have a caller on the line, Brian Fox.
Okay.
Would like to speak during the public...
Hey, great. Thanks. Go ahead, Brian.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, staff, neighbors, and friends. On behalf of the Greater Durham Chamber of Commerce, we appreciate your continued support of projects like this that address global health issues, but clearly will also benefit all Durham residents, both directly and indirectly. As you just heard, as we continue to increase access and equity across our community and specifically to our growing life science industry, your partnership with EdVerm enables their investment in Durham to help support all of our shared priorities. The Chamber looks forward to helping this great new partner thrive in our renowned biotech sector and appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you. Are there any other callers? Monica?
No, Chair Howerton, we do not have any callers, and we did not receive any emails.
Great. Thank you. So I will close the public hearing and back to Commissioners. Any comments, questions from you? Commissioner Burns?
I will be very quick. I usually, you know, I would have jumped in, you know, with staff, but I always just applaud Andy. I always like to hear what the companies have to say, because we do, as a board, work to make sure that we're ensuring that the community sees the impact and sees why we are making these investments. And so when we think about the next big driver for growth, we're looking at companies taking a bolder role in corporate social responsibility. And for me, I just want to say a special thank you to Ms. House, Ms. Dinda, and Mr. Jusajari. So everything you said, I think, hit so many points. There's a part of me that says you must have Googled each one of us to find out, because Commissioner Carter, they drove right down your street. Then they made a turn and came down my street. So just in a world where, you know, economic performance, growth are like key to defining business success, we're always looking for organizations. Organizations are also challenged to ensure that their environmental and their social impacts are leading to a more sustainable future, a more sustainable planet, and also a sustainable workplace for folks. And so when you, one of the things that you hit for me was you all plan on hiring locally. We recognize here in Durham that our 36 other counties come into this county every day. So we're looking forward to you hiring our people. We are looking forward to you contracting with our people. And I want to just say in advance, thank you for seeing the value in our county. I love that you all want to preserve sight for life. I have had glasses since I was three, so let me know when you all get this bad boy offline. I'm not going to say that everyone on the screen wears glasses, but yeah, everyone on the screen wears glasses. So I look forward to working with you all. And in the event, you know, you run into a snag where you're trying to figure out, okay, how are we going to hit this mark? Recognize that you have five people that were elected to office that know this community, love this community, and want to work with you in tandem to make sure you hit those marks for the internships and with the teachers. So we look forward to you moving here and please just continue to engage us. And thank you for thinking that our people are the right people for the job.
Yeah, Commissioner Alum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm back on the camera, because I just wanted to be able to share. Like, I share the sentiments shared by Chairwoman Howerton and Commissioner Burns, that, you know, when we have these meetings with Andy to learn about the companies that come. And thank you so much to Andy and the staff that brought us to this point to be able to have amazing companies pitching themselves to Durham. Is we have these meetings and we always get concerned that, you know, when you talk about economic development and companies coming to Durham, there's always that worry that, you know, is this actually going to be helping the everyday people of Durham? And we want to make sure that these jobs and opportunities are really created so Durhamites can thrive and seek these opportunities. And I could see, as Commissioner Burns mentioned, like, every one of us had our eyes twinkling when you guys are speaking and sharing the different initiatives and programs you're going to really practice and show that you want to be a part of Durham. And you had mentioned that you wanted help from us to become a part of Durham, but really you guys are taking the great initiative and step of coming forward with open arms to be a part of Durham. So I really appreciate that. And I know, I think all of us were, during the campaign trail, we went to Behima one time for a community forum. And Behima is one of the more rural areas in northern Durham County, where the residents there, they were explaining to us a big concern, and most of the people who attended were seniors in the community. And their biggest concern was we need more companies that'll provide internships to our high school students. We don't want to see our high school students left behind. So it's really great to hear you all sharing that you're going to be really investing in those type of opportunities for our youth. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Carter?
I won't speak long, because my colleagues have said it all so very well. But I do want to say, Andy, thank you so much for inviting these three guests. And thanks to each of you for joining us tonight. It truly helps to hear specifics about what your plans are for how you're going to work with our education system, for what you're going to do towards environmental sustainability, to what your diversity hiring plan is and purchasing plan. So all of the details that you gave us tonight really provided a great color analysis for your team. And really glad that you're with us and want to welcome you to Durham. Your company's cool also, I will say. That gene therapy stuff is really cool.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobs?
I'll be quick, because I think everybody's really said it all. But I have an uncle who has macular degeneration and goes for his many shots in his eyes. So to hear you talk about wanting to have a solution where there's literally one shot for people who have to go through that is really amazing. But I also want to recognize what we've been experiencing here in Durham during the pandemic, which is, we have been so blessed that we have continued to have our job sectors in the areas of life science, biotech, and manufacturing growing. And so I just feel like we're so fortunate. We have people in our community who really, who have lost their jobs in the pandemic. And we know that we need to connect people to working in great places like EdVerm. And also having folks like you come from other parts of the country and bringing what you are doing in other places and helping to impact the ecosystem that we have here and also set an example for other companies. I really welcome that. And again, thank you for everything that you did share with us tonight. We look forward to supporting you. As you started out saying, you're new to the community. And so that is on us, right? To make sure that you get connected to the people and the resources. And I think that this isn't maybe a topic for our budget retreat, folks, but I would like our board to discuss that further about, because I know Andy can't do everything, even though he is Superman. But I think it would be good for us to think about how we really do facilitate making sure that all the things that you're committing to, how we really can help make that happen. But again, this is exciting and welcome to our community.
Thank you all. So Commissioners, due to virtual meetings, the new rule requires all public hearings remain open for 24 hours to allow time for additional public comments. If comments are received, they will be read during the February 22 regular session meeting, at which time a vote will be considered. So thank you so much. Commissioners, there was the proclamation. We did not take a vote on the proclamation earlier. If we can have a vote on that?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the wonderful proclamation declaring Juneteenth to be a local holiday here in Durham County.
Thank you. And I have a second.
Madam Chair, I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Alum. If we can get a verbal vote, if a clerk will call, vote for, a verbal vote, please.
Commissioner Alum?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Bye, Chair Jacobs?
Aye.
And Chair Howerton?
Aye. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Our next item is 21008, Durham County Public Health Focused Update on COVID-19 Crisis. The Board has requested a public update from our hard-working Health Director, Mr. Jenkins. So if we would, if you would please, give us an update on what's happening around the vaccination, please.
Yes, ma'am. More than happy to do it, Madam Chair. Good evening to everyone. And I see the 10 minutes in parentheses, and I will do my best to provide you with an update in 10 minutes or less. I know Madam Chair is a stickler for time, so without further ado, we continue to ask that our residents and staff go to our data hub. We've updated it with some unique information, not only about current statistics and trends for COVID-19, but we also have some unique information as it relates to vaccination efforts as well. So please, give it a gander. Total active cases, 1,032. Total inactive cases of those who've beat COVID-19, 19,586. Unfortunately, Commissioners, since the last time I've given you a briefing, we've had 13 deaths due to COVID-19. So that brings us to 193. And as always, our thoughts and prayers and meditations are with those families in Durham who's lost loved ones due to COVID-19. Total since the pandemic began, as of this date, 20,816 total cases. In terms of how we're doing, the month of January was not kind to Durham County. We had 4,703 total cases, without a doubt the highest on record. We did have a seven-day moving average of 137. However, I'm delighted to say that, like the rest of the country, Durham is seeing a downward trend now in our hospitalizations, our genomic disease prevalence, and also in our number of cases. So in other words, it's decreasing, but it's still relatively high. So again, we know that it's going to calm down, because, you know, we're doing a lot of great things. And for the most part, we are delighted to report that to you. We always want to look out for race and ethnicity trends, so, you know, not much change. We'll say Hispanic-Latinx population, as far as percentage of all of our cases, is right at 19.86%. African-Americans continue to be proportionally represented at 37.98% of all of our cases. Our white population in Durham continues to be underrepresented, 28.32%. In terms of work and where COVID is happening, in those workplaces, we're still seeing lots of cases in nursing care facilities and correctional institutions, and also our professional, scientific, and technical areas. And our clusters team, long-term care facilities, strike team, are continuing to work with that, particularly around vaccination efforts inside these congregant facilities. Percentage positive labs reported for last week, or really for the past two weeks, Commissioners, has been right at 7.7%. We're gracious enough to receive the models from Duke and it's showing that Durham's infection is at 4.9%. So again, that's great news. It really reflects what I said earlier, that we are seeing the trend start to go down. So we're delighted about that. As mentioned earlier, if you were to go to the data hub, if you can recall, at one point in time, it would show you all the places where you could get a COVID-19 test. Now, it also shows where you can go to get your COVID-19 vaccinations. So again, great information's out there. We just want everyone under the sound of my voice to know that as more vaccines begin to hit the market, we are certainly wanting you to know where you can go get your vaccination, when it is your turn. For the month of January, for those individuals who are 18 years of age and younger, we did see 13.33% rate of infection. Again, we are continuing to keep our eye on school-aged children. And for the most part, we do know that, you know, that is the result of a lot of holiday activity. And we are most hopeful that that is going to go down, but we continue to keep our eyes on that. In terms of the county alert system, we remain in orange. And it simply means that we need to double and triple down on our three Ws, which is, again, you know, wear your mask, wait six feet apart, wash your hands vigorously, avoid large gatherings, and avoid those opportunities to congregate in settings that are not your own household. So again, an update on COVID-19 vaccines. The Durham County Department of Public Health and Duke continue to deliver vaccines, you know, to the Durham community. As I previously reported to the Board, Durham County has received its vaccines from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It is unfortunate that we've only been guaranteed 600 guaranteed doses for three weeks. We received our 600 last week. We're slated to receive 600 this week, and we will receive 600 next week. I am delighted to report that we have received what they call equity doses, an amount of 700 additional doses. And that is really targeted for our seniors who are 65 years and older and our marginalized populations, i.e. our Black and Brown residents of Durham County. We are definitely working hard to make sure that this population is vaccinated. And I'm also delighted to report that we're doing a very good job, contrary to what some reports may say. Durham County's numbers are really, really above that of the states as far as our rate of penetration, as far as doses that have gone out. Durham has administered 50,456 total doses to date. First doses were 36,634, second doses 13,822. So again, our percentage of first doses administered is 11.4%, second dose is 4.3%. But again, that doesn't really paint the picture. And for the most part, our utilization rates for vaccine administration, again, for Asian population, 2.48% for North Carolina, 5.8% for Durham County. Our Black population, 13.51% for North Carolina, 21.92% for Durham County. Our Latinx population, I'll be the first to admit, we have a lot of work to do, and we're committed to doing it. State of North Carolina, 2.34%, Durham County, 3.9%. And our white population is where we're a little behind. And our white population is where we're a little behind the state, 7.94% for the white population. For state, 67.24% for Durham County. But again, that's for first doses, and that's what they're really focusing on. With about 2 minutes and 35 seconds left, I will turn it over back to you, Madam Chair, for some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. You always, always do an excellent job in your report, and we appreciate you. We appreciate all of the hard work that you do. Again, I will turn it over to my Commissioners, are there questions you have for Mr. Jenkins? Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Rod. I hope you've gotten some rest.
I did, I did. I heard you, I received the message. I appreciate your concern, Madam Vice Chair.
Good. Rod, I was on the call that, there was an ACO call with Biden Administration last week, and so they were talking about a number of things, and I'm wondering, do you know when we are going to see our Walgreens distribution? Is one of my questions. I have a few questions for you, but that's one of them.
Sure. It is my understanding that Walgreens is going to come online on the 12th. And we're fortunate because I do believe that out of 6,500 retail pharmacies, Durham is getting one of them, and it's only going to increase. I keep telling my staff that, just think back to last summer when we were in the throes of COVID-19 testing, and there were many of us who were just really fretting over how it's going to get done, but lo and behold, the pharmacies and surge testing companies were coming on board, and I see the same thing happening in the recent future.
Great. And can you give us an update on where we're at with at least getting the logistics going for the mass vaccination site, and also any plans for mobile testing, and even using the Durham Kami Library, Tech, our Tech Mobile, or our Book Mobile? I mean, especially the Tech Mobile? It seems like perfect for that, but just any discussions about mobile testing and then the mass vaccination site?
Sure. We certainly will look at mobile testing, but again, it all depends on the number of vaccine that we receive. As mentioned, and I didn't really go into detail, but there's but so much you can do with 1,300 doses of vaccine. Full transparency, they do give you the opportunity to get additional dosages, doses in the form of events, but you have to pre-plan, you have to present your plan, and you have to present it for consideration for additional vaccine, and Madam Vice Chair, it's not guaranteed. So we will do that. We have received an outpouring of ideas from, you know, concerned residents, and we're appreciative of all of it. However, you know, these are the parameters that we're just faced with at present as far as the limited amount of vaccine that we receive. But again, the additional 700 doses, we're really trying to be as creative as we can. My main concern is our Public Health Director at present, ladies and gentlemen, is staff. And I'm seeing a lot of burnout, and it's my duty to really look out for staff. We have nurses that have been doing vaccinations for several weeks, long hours, and, you know, we're going to do what we can to really bring some respite to them. You know, I'm just talking about vaccinations, but keep in mind, these are the same nurses that have been doing COVID-19 testing and surveillance for a very long time. But to get to your additional question, Madam Vice Chair, as far as mass vaccination, a bit of not-so-good news. I have been told that the state-sponsored mega site, that is the partnership with State Office of Emergency Management, partnership with Duke, that has been on pause. That has been paused because they're not going to bring it back up until there are adequate supplies for first and second doses. So I just wanted to make sure I provided that update as well. It's not necessarily the best news that we want to hear, but I'm confident that when supplies become a little bit more robust, that that is going to go back on, but planning for that has been paused at this time.
Okay, that is not good news, especially with our, we have a resolution to consider for vaccinating our school employees, so that's, that would be part of that process.
But I will say, Madam Vice Chair, again, as a part of the event planning, it's not out of the question, it's just a matter of really just making sure that it's planned correctly, and being able to substantiate the need for the additional vaccine with the state. But again, we're really tethered by the allotments that we receive from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services.
Okay, thank you, Rod.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. And Rod, just quickly, in the regard of the burnout, even if we open the mega center, where would the staff come from to be able to man that?
That is a-
Our staff are getting burnt out, so where would the staff come from?
Thank you so much for that question, Madam Chair. That is really a state-supported endeavor. So as we were told, you know, the state would man it, you know, be it with volunteers, or be it with state-supported assets. So that was one sigh of relief for the staff that we didn't necessarily have to man that. But again, we have committed to, you know, taking care of our residents, but we're still delighted to report that even though we have paused active scheduling, we're still able to really get all of our pre-scheduled residents to our Southern High School site. And again, you know, of course, with the thought that school might go back in session, we are planning for additional sites that we could stand up in case we have to leave Southern High School, but right now, it's working out perfectly. And there are plans in place, as I've reported to the Board of County Commissioners, you know, in case, you know, the switch goes off, and, you know, we do bring teachers into Phase Two, we do have plans to vaccinate our teachers effectively, and that is being actively done, planned with, by DPS at Duke and a partnership with the Department of Public Health. So we have plans in place, we just need vaccine.
Well, thank you. Given, and given in that regard, the Board has added a resolution to the, this item that's related to COVID-19, and the response, and the need for vaccine for our teachers and our workers, our workers in our schools. And I think, I'm just trying to figure out, Commissioner Burns, would you like to read that?
I'm certainly happy to take a stab at it, absolutely. Durham Board of County Commissioners Resolution: Shots for a Safe Return Supporting the Vaccination of School Workers. Whereas our public education system is among the most critical community infrastructure, providing academic instruction, social and emotional learning, and support vital childcare, nutrition, health services, and social connectedness for children and families. And whereas it is a top priority for our Durham community that we ensure safe spaces in which our students can learn and grow, and our school staff can work. And whereas each school worker is essential to providing our students with safe, healthy learning environments. And whereas there are safety protocols recognized by the CDC for reopening schools to minimize risks posed by in-person learning for our staff, our students, and their families. And whereas Governor Cooper has consistently emphasized the importance of the three W's in creating safe learning environments, where masks, wait six feet away, and wash hands. And whereas newer, more contagious, and more deadly strains of the virus have recently emerged, reinforcing the importance of the social distancing and masking requirements consistent with Governor Cooper's Plan B guidelines. And whereas effective COVID-19 vaccines have been developed with more than 1 million doses having been distributed throughout North Carolina. And whereas adding vaccination of educators to the three W's would add another layer of protection from the COVID-19 virus. And whereas we value the health and safety of our staff, and believe that ensuring vaccine access for educators and all school-based personnel will improve the safety of in-person instruction and improve health outcomes overall for our students, our family, and our committee. Now therefore be it resolved, the Durham County Board of County Commissioners urges North Carolina Secretary of Health and Human Services Mandy Cohen, along with Governor Roy Cooper, to shift school-based personnel to Priority Category Two, so that they can be vaccinated in this current phase and in advance of the reopening of schools. And be it further resolved that Durham County Government stands ready to coordinate our local health department efforts with those of the North Carolina Public Health officials, Duke Health System, and other community partners to facilitate making the vaccine available to each of our school workers with all due haste, so that we can reopen our vital public education system with the greatest assuredness of safety. This the 8th day of February 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. Any comments on this resolution, Commissioners?
I have two comments, though, Chair.
Sure.
One, I just feel like with the way that Commissioner Burns read that resolution was so powerful, that feels in my heart. I do want to also thank DAE President Michelle Burton for bringing this to our Board, and for continuing to be an advocate for all of our school staff across Durham.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Carter?
I also just want to lift up our local teachers' union, and really thank them for bringing this forward. I think it's a very strong resolution, and it states its case really well. I do believe that of all the systems that need shoring up right now, it is our public education system. It's one of the, if not the, most important system that I don't feel like we've poured quite as much resources into to keep it running. And in order to do that safely, we really need to vaccinate our teachers. So I'm just really hopeful and thankful to Rod and all of our community partners that are working to try to advance that cause, and I hope that they'll be successful, so that we can get our children back in school safely, and our teachers with them in person.
Commissioner Jacobs?
I just want to echo all the comments that have been said. This came to us very last minute, and it's really important. As Commissioner Burns, I mean Commissioner Alum mentioned, we, I want to acknowledge Michelle Burton and the Durham Association of Educators for all the work they've been doing to advocate for the safe reopening of our schools. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Carter, because you also worked on this resolution, and I think made it even stronger. So thank you for your efforts on that. And just how important it is that we do speak loud and clear to the Governor and Secretary Ghosn, and to the state legislature, that at this point in the pandemic, when we are just starting to really be able to vaccinate people, when we have a viral strain that we know is more contagious, that it's more important than ever that we are doing this the right way, and that our school employees, all of them, are going to be protected, and that they, and their families, and all of our children when they go home to their families. Our Durham Public Schools community makes up a huge part of our community, and we're so close at this point, and we just, we really need to do it the right way. So I'm glad that our Board is taking this very strong position and sending this strong message, and we know that Rod and the Kami Manager, and Duke Health, and everybody is working together to make sure that we can vaccinate our teachers and all the DPS employees when we have the vaccines. Thank you.
So thank you, Commissioners, and I too want to thank Michelle for calling me, and I was, and I was able to get this resolution to staff right away, and they could put it in the, in the, in our regular format, to get it onto our agenda tonight, because it did come to us really late, but we felt that it was important enough to get it on the agenda tonight. So thank you, Michelle, for calling me and making sure that that happened.
Indeed.
We're going to move on, Commissioners, to our next item.
Madam Chair, could you officially adopt that resolution?
No, we have, okay, so we have to adopt the resolution, so I call for a vote on this resolution as well.
Madam Chair, I move that we-
Okay.
I move that we adopt the resolution: Shots for a Safe Return Supporting Vaccination of School Workers.
Second?
Second.
So it has been moved by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Burns, that we adopt this resolution, and voices vote by a clerk.
Commissioner Alum?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Yes.
And Chair Howerton?
Aye. It has been approved five to zero. Thank you. So our next item is 21-0063, RFP 21-003, Property Tax Software Solutions. The Board is asked to receive a brief discussion on the contract for property tax software. And we have Dwayne, our tax administrator, on the, you're not on the line, you are here to have this conversation with us.
I am here. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Glad to be here tonight. I've got a few staff here with me, while Monica is queuing up the presentation. We also have, it looks like a couple people from Farragut, as well as Mr. David Baker from NCACC, who, at your pleasure, Madam Chair, may wish to make a comment or two. Monica, next slide, please. Okay, so this, this tax software is somewhat expected. The current software we're on, it's based on an AS400 server. It is becoming extinct, very, very hard to learn, not really taught in schools anymore, and it operates on a difficult language, programming language. So this is, it's been, it's been expected for some time that we'd have to transition to a, to a new, more modern server and system shortly here. The current software lacks workflow management. It lacks efficient integrations with third-party vendors, and it's very difficult and time-consuming to use when you first start with Durham County, new employees coming on. It is, having experienced several systems myself in different counties, this one is difficult and time-consuming to use. And when you're, when you're using it, it lacks the efficiency as well. So what we're looking for with new software is something more modern, modern server, modern language, something maybe SQL-based, that the skills are available in the workplace, and it's easy to understand. Efficient workflow management, being able to track production rates, and better able to plan work in that workflow management queue, the ability to easily integrate with outside vendors. And then, one of the big ones for me, I hate printing paper. We have, we have people that give us these hard copy calendars all the time, and I, it drives me crazy because I don't, I don't want to print. And with this system, some of the tools that integrate with it, it would allow us to go paperless. Monica, next slide, please. So the RFP itself, it works with Durham County Purchasing, IS&amp;T Finance, Ms. Claudia, and we published the RFP, number 21-003. We got it published August 31, 2020, the last day for questions. We called questions on September 16 by 3 p.m., and then we asked that all proposals be due back to us by October 1, 2020 at 2 p.m. Next slide. The evaluations, we had six proposals that were submitted to us. All of them were very good. We were very pleased that we had six vendors that- All of them were very good. We were very pleased that we had six vendors that wanted to offer us their business and, and give us an opportunity to take a look at their proposal. We published the criteria in the RFP as far as the evaluation, what we were looking for, the scoring metric, how it would be evaluated, it was published in the RFP. The Durham County Tax Leadership Team, we had two full-day demos with our top two vendors. We held a, a meeting with the staff of two counties who currently use each one of those top two vendors. And we had a kind of a one-to-one discussion from a staffing perspective. Because you know, when you meet with vendors and you have, you're in their demo environment, you're in the test environment, things are made to work. And we wanted to see when you're doing a reappraisal, when you, when it's late December, early January and you have lines out your door, how does the system act then? That's, we wanted to talk with the staff about that, along with the responsiveness of the vendor among some other things as well. And then after those discussions with two counties that each use one of those top two vendors we had, we held a final meeting with each finalist software vendor. And it was, I think about half a day. And we asked some final tough questions of the vendor. And from there, we were able to make a decision. We went on to scoring, finance, IS&amp;T, they've been kept in the loop, this whole process. Going to the next slide Monica? So as far as scoring, the people, the, the way the scoring worked, well first of all, we did the, we just scored the evaluation criteria in the RFP. And the deputies at that time and myself were the three scorers. So myself, Ms. Teresa Hairston and Mr. Starlin Beating. Now, we used Microsoft Teams as we were doing the scoring in real-time. And we involved the, the full leadership team as we were doing the scoring. So three of us did the scoring, but we involved the full supervisory team of Durham County Tax and make sure that we heard their input, that they agreed with our rating, et cetera, so on. So as far as the scoring, I've got a chart here and you can see that, that Farragut of the six proposals, Farragut stood out. There, there's a, a large gap between Farragut and, and all of the other vendors. And I should point out that, you know, this is cumulative scoring. This is, the, the three of our scorers added together. But individually, for myself, for Ms. Hairston, Mr. Beating, when we scored it individually, Farragut was by far the number one choice individually as well. Next slide please. So as far as the anticipated, projected, estimated cost of going with Farragut as a new tax software solution. And keep in mind, this is a, a long-term purchase. We've been on the current software for about 20 years, a little more than 20 years. So this is a long-term purchase. And I was extremely pleased with the pricing that Farragut offered in the RFP. Very competitive with all the other bids and offered a lot of stuff that some of the other companies didn't offer. One of the, one of the foremost things that Farragut offers is that the company has property tax experts on staff. Retired county employees, people that we could call up and we don't have to explain what a listing form is. And we don't have to explain things to them, they know. And that is an incredible asset to have. So as far as the, the pricing, the initial pricing, looking at about 1.35 million to get the Farragut, the NCPTS system up and running in Durham County. Next slide. So a brief overview of Farragut. It supports 51% of the North Carolina tax base. Farragut has some, some very large counties that it supports and it has as a customer. And I've got just a few of them listed here. There are more listed on the Farragut website. Mecklenburg County, these are some of the top 10 counties there. But Farragut also has some smaller counties as well. So a broad spectrum of North Carolina counties. And I didn't list two on here because I knew I would remember. Our two neighbors to the east and the west, Wake County was the first Farragut user. It was actually called IIS back then. But Wake County, still today, you know, 20 years later, still uses a version of Farragut software. And then Orange County is also a customer of Farragut. So some really large counties there. And then in 2013, it was selected by the Department of Revenue as the software of choice for the new tag and tax program. And that's a statewide program that each county uses. It's got a partnership with NCACC. And maybe more pleasing than its business practices and its workflow management, you know, all the things with the system itself, Farragut's been headquartered in Durham County since 1992. So it is part of our Durham community. Next slide please. With that, we will entertain any questions the board may have. And as I said, we've got a few people here from Farragut that I'm sure are excited at this opportunity and Madam Chair, they may wish to offer comments at your pleasure.
Thank you so much Dwayne. I'm familiar with Farragut, being the president of the State Association of County Commissioners. I've got to hear and see a lot during the, during my years of, of, with being the president of the association. So I'm pretty familiar with them. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Carter?
Well, thank you for the presentation, Dwayne. Thanks to you and your staff. I'm certainly supportive of this. I just had a quick question about the minority participation and the different attachments we received. The MWBE compliance review form said 0% of our goals were being achieved. But I swear, I thought I read somewhere else and I can't find it right now, so tell me if I'm crazy. But I thought I read that this was a 100% minority-owned firm, in addition to being local to Durham. Am I remembering that right?
That is correct. Mr. McDonald, do you want to explain the ownership structure of Farragut?
Yes. Our, our owners, owners are minorities. So we are a minority-owned business and also our, if you look at our staff, we are 62% minority. Our, our staff, which is based in Durham, is 62% minority.
Right.
I think the form you saw was related to if we were to use subcontractors. But, but our intent is not to use subcontractors, we're going to use our, our own staff.
So it seems like it would be 100% then, not 0%, but I don't know, maybe I'm just thinking incorrectly. As far, as far as our goals go. Anyway, sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions Commissioners?
I just wanted, I, I wanted to just throw out a quick thank you to Dwayne as well for the presentation. All for you, you all being able to do your work seamlessly, seamlessly and more efficiently especially. I know it has not been difficult on staff during COVID, you know, from finance to tax. I remember doing orientation, you know, we haven't hit the percentages that we wanted to in the past. So I, I am thankful for that. And at first I did have that same question that Commissioner Carter had, but I assumed, yeah, it was, the, the 0% was based on the fact that you all didn't have any subs. So that, it's just, you know, even for staff, let's always make sure we have that. Because those are the kinds of things, not only do commissioners catch, but the, our community catches and then we catch it. So just throwing that out there, just that clarification. But that was all I had.
Commissioner Jacobs, did you have a question or comment?
I think the three of us were all, had all picked up on that too. And it just made me think that maybe we also need, if that's the way our form is, then maybe we also need to have something that isn't just about the subcontractors in terms of our MWBE goals. I don't, you know, just something to think about. But Dwayne, I could see you are palpably excited about this, about this whole process and about bringing us into the 21st century. So, so, so thank you. And I'm sure the rest of your staff is as excited as you are too. My only question was, what is the anticipated yearly cost? Because I, I assume there's some type of a yearly contract that we would have with Farragut related to the technology and maintenance and technical support. So what do you, what do you anticipate that to be? And was that something that was also looked at when you were evaluating all of the other companies?
Yeah, absolutely. And that was competitive with the other bids as well. I, I believe that it's based on number of bills that, that Durham County would issue. And it's around $300,000 a year, which is competitive. So we, we consider that in the, in, what we did when we looked at the bids was a, a, a five-year projection of costs, including implementation, ongoing annual support fee, et cetera, so on. And Farragut was very competitive.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here as well, all of you from Farragut. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much for being here. Commissioners, we're requested to take action on this item tonight. If all questions are answered, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval. Okay, my attorney came on the screen. Is there something?
Just point of clarification for the manager. I didn't see it on the agenda, but Mr. Manager, is this on for action tonight?
That's what my note says.
It is? Okay. Please move forward.
Okay, thank you. A motion?
I'll second. Commissioner Burns moved it and I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Burns moved and seconded by Commissioner Jacobs to approve this item. Roll call by clerk please.
Commissioner Alom?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Aye.
And Chair Howerton?
Aye. It passes five to zero. Thank you all. So our next item is 21-0078, postpone the 2023 general reappraisal. The tax administrator is back with us again. The next general reappraisal postponed until January 1, 2027 to allow the full set of NCDOR reappraisal standards to be met along with a full new property tax system to be implemented. Dwayne is our resource person.
Right, thank you Madam Chair. This item, it, it plays into the previous item a little bit. I've got a, a brief presentation for this. I think we have 10 minutes allotted for this part of the agenda. Monica, next slide please. So just going over the basics, what is a general reappraisal? I've got three bullets here, very, very high-level stuff. As, as we approach the next reappraisal, you'll see a lot more presentations getting down into the weeds with the reappraisal. Basically, it's the update of real property tax values to current market value. And the, the primary goal is not to raise taxes, it's not to raise values. The primary goal is to reestablish equity. So during, in, in non-reappraisal years, properties may increase, decrease at different rates, which affects equity. And the, the goal of a reappraisal, since you do it once every four, six, eight years, is to reestablish that equity. As of the effective date of the appraisal, the tax values may go up, down, stay the same. You never know what is going to happen in the market. In a non-reappraisal year, the years between the reappraisal, real property values generally won't change. If you look at, from a high level, they're not going to change. And I've got the two, the two ends of the spectrum here. Changes in the economy, like we're seeing right now. If we don't do a reappraisal, then there will not be a change in the tax value, whether that's up or down. Now, the other side of that is physical or legal changes. If you go out there and you build a house or you add a deck, something like that, then even if it's a non-reappraisal year, the tax value would change in that situation. But those are, when you talk about 100, 125,000 parcels, those are a fraction of what we see. Next slide. All right, so some applicable state laws. 105-286, and this is where it gets exciting when I start quoting statutes. All North Carolina counties must, must conduct a general reappraisal at least once every eight years. There are two, now there are two options that could alter that bullet. One is a mandatory advancement, where if you have a population of 75,000 or more and based on some sales ratio numbers, you can, you can trigger a mandatory advancement. Meaning if you're not scheduled to do a reappraisal, you could end up doing one anyways if you trigger that mandatory advancement. The other option is an optional advancement. So if, you know, you're individual county and probably, I'm not sure what the exact number is now, but probably half the counties have advanced the schedule more frequent than eight years. And the counties have that option. 105-283, it's a uniform appraisal standard. Everything in North Carolina is appraised at 100% of market value as of the date of reappraisal. So our last reappraisal was January 1, 2019. All real property values in Durham County reflect market value as of that date, not today's date, as of that date. Next slide please. So background and some complications. Previous general reappraisals in Durham had one, 2008. And then we had one eight years later in 2016. We had one three years later, which is our most recent one, January 1, 2019. And now we're scheduled for 2023. You can kind of see how the, the history of the reappraisals in, in the past. So some complications we, we have dealt with and are dealing with. We, the reappraisal standards basically start, I think it's three years out. So we were scheduled January 1, 2020 to start on the new Department of Revenue reappraisal standards. And we did. We, the, the first step is to collect a 1% random sample to test the quality of your records. And we were, we were getting there. Then March 6 came. And we had some, some issues to deal with. So that kind of put us off track a little bit. And then that was the left hook and then the right hook of COVID-19 came. And that put us all working from home and not being able to get on the community. So we fell behind significantly in the best practices, the reappraisal standards that's established for our state. And then of course, the last item we just heard was that with our next general reappraisal, we were hoping to be on the new property tax software. And, you know, those three events combined kind of put us behind with that as well. Next slide please. So what are the consequences of delaying the 2023 reappraisal? The main thing I wanted to look at before I proposed this to the Commissioners was the equity. I want to make sure that it, if we delay the reappraisal, that no group of properties, no income levels would be adversely affected. We just finished our year-end sales ratio study for the Department of Revenue. And you can see here 676 sales. I want to focus in on the two equity measures. One is the COD, which is the third one from the top. That is a measure of dispersion in your sales data. All right, so you can, you want, you want to make sure that you're, when you compare property sales to your assessed values, that everything is tightly compact. A greater, a greater COD means that you might have a property over here that sold for 50% more than tax value, and a property over here that sold 50% less than tax value. So a lot of disparity in the sales. The COD of 9.5 is below industry standards still, which means that the lower the COD is, the better. So from that standpoint, the dispersion in the sales data in the current market is, our, our tax values are still holding up from that equity measure. There's, there would be no adverse equity impact there. The second measure is the PRD, and that's at the very bottom of your screen on this chart. 1.002. So this measures vertical equity in taxation. The, you want to fall between 0.98 and 1.03 within that measure. And you can see at 1.00, we are right in the middle of that acceptable range. 1.03 and above would indicate that the tax, the property tax is becoming regressive. And 0.98 and below would indicate that it's becoming progressive. So you want to stay within 0.98 to 1.03, and being at 1.00 is especially good from an equity standpoint. So no equity issues that I can see based on the most recent analysis of 676 sales. Next slide, please. All right, so the request of action would be to delay the 2023 reappraisal to 2027, January 1, 2027, unless we trigger the mandatory advancement. And, you know, we, if we do that, then I would come back to the board and advise you of the situation that that's beyond our control. But I would say that we, we push it out to the full eight years, kind of like Durham did in the 2008 to 2016 reappraisal. All real property equity measures, they're in line. There, there's going to be no adverse impacts on any group of properties by delaying this, as long as these trends hold up. The new software could be fully implemented prior to the 2027 reappraisal work beginning. Usually takes about, I would say, going on a new system, about two years, beginning to end, to do a reappraisal. And then lastly, the new best practices, reappraisal standards by Department of Revenue, they could be fully met. And I believe with that, I will entertain any questions the board may have.
So commissioners, this is another item that action needs to be taken tonight. Other questions are from commissioners. Commissioner Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Duane. Could you say just a little bit more about the vertical and horizontal equity, those numbers that you mentioned, the COD, and whatever that other number was? And what they, what that stands for, COD? I just didn't quite understand that. And it seems like that's kind of the critical piece, a critical piece.
Right, so those are our two equity measures that we look at. COD stands for coefficient of dispersion. And it basically is an indication of how much, how much spread, how much dispersion you have in the sales data. So what we do is we, when we, when we do a sales ratio study, we take the assessed value of a property, which currently reflects January 1, 2019 right now, because that's our last reappraisal, and then we compare it to the current market sale. So a property is just sold February 8. All right, so we go in and see what it sold for today, and compare that to its tax value, which reflects January 1, 2019. And then we come up with a, what we call a sales ratio. And that basically, that percentage is basically, it shows what percentage tax value is of that sales price. Then you do it in aggregate, all right? And you come up with the coefficient of dispersion. And I, I just took an eight-hour exam on this, so I know like all the single, all the steps to it. I usually wouldn't probably remember all this without reflecting a textbook. But it's just...
So, Duane, let me interrupt you just for a second. Can you give some, because you're doing, you're giving us, I think, kind of giving the public a little bit of jargon. Could you give them numbers with that, so it kind of makes sense?
Right. Yeah, so the coefficient of dispersion, it's just a measure of how tightly compact the sales are. All right? The, the lower the coefficient of dispersion is, the better our tax values are holding up to market sales. And then, and then the price-related differential, the PRD, that's a measure of your vertical equity.
That's the one I really didn't understand. That one especially didn't make sense to me.
Right. So if it is, if it's above 1.03, when you, I say we calculated, the system calculates for us. When you calculate the, the PRD, the price-related differential, if it comes out above 1.03, then it means that your tax assessments are regressive, all right?
Can you tell me what you're measuring there? I mean, that, I, I remember that part. You know, if it's too high, it's regressive. If it's too low, it's progressive, which actually sounds good to me. Maybe not for revenue collection. But, um, I like it, I understand the coefficient, that the first one, the COD, what you're actually measuring here. I don't really see what you're measuring. I, I can, I could just accept what you're saying, but it would be so much nicer if I actually understood it, sort of.
Right, so this, this all goes off the sales ratio study. So it's all comparing when a property sells to its tax value. All of these stats, it compares that sales ratio. All right, so the price-related differential is the, I think it's the mean divided by the weighted mean. All right, so you take, you take these, these 676 sales that I just showed you, that, the aggregate report, you take all those, and you add up, you calculate the, the mean ratio of all those 676 sales, and then the weighted mean, and you divide them. All right, and it gives you the price-related differential. So all of this is a function of the assessed value in relation to the property that has recently sold. And it measures...
I think I get it. That's helpful. I will, I'm going to think on it some more, but, so my, another question that raises for me is, it's a long time we're delaying, it feels like. You know, it'll be eight years since the last one. And I, when I first came onto the board, you know, there were all these reasons why you don't want to wait eight years, which is, which is what I learned. So now we're being asked to wait eight years, and I hear you making a good case and presenting reasons for it. And most of those, much of those justification for why it's not necessarily a negative thing for us to do relate to these measures of equity. So do you, how, how do we know they're not going to change? Like you said, if the trends continue, but I feel like things change really rapidly in Durham related to real estate prices. And I just, I just worry that we'll get into a position where some things are inequitable. Do we have to wait as long as you're asking? Like, could it be two-year, you know, until 2025, or instead of '27, for example?
Right, and, and there's the option, if, if we get implemented with the tax software and, and we're able to meet the reappraisal standards, those best practices. You know, if you schedule '27 now, you could say, hey, I think we'll, we'll be ready to go by '25. And we could do it that way as well. The, the decision is up to the board. I would just like some time for this tax software to get implemented and to be able to go through these reappraisal standards that we all have agreed upon are the best standards. Now, as far as the, the monitoring of the equity and, and, you know, how, how tax values are holding up to market sales, we do these sales ratio analyses quarterly. So we're, I'm, I'm the first one that wants to see this sales ratio study when it's completed by staff, so I can look at the, the measures of equity, see, see how, see how tax values are holding up. You know, I, I, I enjoy seeing that and seeing how, how those things stack up. So it's something I monitor. I try to include it in the monthly report I do for the board and keep you all abreast of what's happening and how things are looking.
So what I hear you saying is you need some, you need some time to really be able to determine what we do, whether we do it early or late? Is that what you're saying?
Right, well, you know, as far as the tax software, I would allow a couple of years to get implemented with the tax software. So if we were, if we were to start, if we were to start with implementation of the tax software, and I think this is a bit ambitious, but we'll say March 1st. We're looking two years out, so that puts us in March 2023. And then we'd have to allow a couple of years. Like I said, the reappraisal standards that have been published for our state, they start three years out. So that puts us at, what, January 1, 2026, right there.
Then, Duane, I mean, you talked about the technical aspects of the reappraisal, but what we aren't taking into account is the fact that, obviously, the economy played a role in our ability or our decision to move forward with the reappraisal as well. And so, you know, obviously, from a historical perspective, you never want to consider that when you're in a recessed economy, which subsequently is where we are now. And we couple that with the fact that we are instituting a new software. There are a couple of different learning curves that are taking place. One, obviously, understanding the implications from the software, number one. And, and number two, making sure that the software is in fact right. But the second piece, of course, is having a better gauge on essentially where we are economically and folks' ability to pay. Because, obviously, in a recessed economy, even though, you know, we have census tracts and neighborhoods where property is still moving and moving very well, you could run into a situation of sticker shock, quite frankly, in some neighborhoods. And Duane talked about those various disparities between neighborhoods, and, and, and that could create some, some problems for you. And so what Duane is, you know, recommending and suggesting is probably the best approach for us. This is the third revale, I think, I've been a part of here in Durham County over the last 20 years. And so, you know, what he's offering is the best advice.
And, Mr. Manager, I bring up a good point if I can, just a second. I, I actually did my master's thesis at UNC on property tax, and love it so much, so why not take it to school? And I, I did it using actual county data and during, during the Great Recession. And basically, what I was looking at was how does the tax burden shift if you do a reappraisal during a recession? And it, it showed clearly that if you do it during a recession, it becomes much more regressive. The higher-value properties, they fall in value much more so than the lower-value properties. That creates a much more regressive property tax.
Okay, so what's the pleasure? Okay, we can take maybe another five minutes on this item, commissioners. We've got another hour that we, of items to go. So make your questions pretty quick, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Duane, I have a question. So is, and the manager Davis as well, is it possible of, if we're putting the reappraisals on hold, to do a more targeted effort in the meantime of providing reevaluation or reappraisal opportunities for black and brown community members and individuals with incomes below certain AMI within Durham County?
And I, I think that's been, that's, that's a board goal that I'm very much aware of. So I'm glad you brought that up, is, is the assistance of some sort of tax relief for, for lower-income homeowners. So that's something, you know, I, I included the program they have in Mecklenburg County. I sent that to the board recently. So while we can't reappraise those properties, we are trying to be as creative as possible in finding ways to assist that population. Because we don't want, we don't want to create a burden. So we're looking at all possibilities with, with helping in that area.
So, Duane, the way the Machinery Act reads, though, when we do a reappraisal or revaluation, we have to do it countywide, essentially, for all properties. I guess that goes to the heart of the question that Commissioner Alom asked, right?
Yeah, exactly. The, the properties that are being affected by gentrification, they would be reappraised. Like, like the, the higher-value, every, every property in Durham County would be reappraised to current market value.
Yep, thank you.
So I just want to, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to follow up on something that Commissioner Alom just noted, was mentioned in her, her question, which I was going to raise tonight, is that I am, I'm very concerned about how the pandemic is impacting many of our residents. And we know that housing is the number-one issue. We see it on the resident survey, we're seeing it in the comp plan comments. We know that the, the most expensive form of assistance that we've been spending money on coming into Durham County has been rental assistance. We know people are, are being challenged, even on commercial leases, paying, paying rents. But, so I, I would, and, Duane, I really appreciate that you tried your best with the tax deferral program. But the fact is, only one, we only had one homeowner in Durham County take advantage of the deferral program. And you did bring to us this new information about Mecklenburg County. So I would like to see what the other commissioners feel about this. But I, I would like us to be able to bring the Tax Assistant Grant Program back for discussion to, to our board in light of the new information that we have from Mecklenburg County. And plus, just within the context of everything that people are dealing with in our community, and knowing that one of the most important systemic things that we can do for our longtime, low-income homeowners, many who are people of color in our community, is to implement this type of tax relief program. So I would, I would like to suggest that we either discuss it at our retreat or at our meeting on, on February 22nd, for our board to discuss this further. And I'd like to hear from other board members on, on this. Thank you, Duane.
Mr. Jacobs, I know that we are looking at putting the agenda together for the retreat, and I have not met with the manager yet, but we, I would like to see what, Duane, if he has worked up something. With that, I know that there were a lot of legal challenges around it before, so if he's got a recommendation, if you'll have that conversation with the manager, and then we'll see if it's something that we can have at the retreat or, or is another time. But it, because we're all concerned about people and every, and people having a place to live. That's, that's a concern for everybody on this board and the community. So if Duane has something that he wants to present to us, if he wants to present it later, after he's gotten some numbers together, and have a conversation with the manager about it, would be great. Can we do that, Duane?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'm really sorry. I'm just feeling unreadiness with this issue. Yeah, it just feels like, I guess I'm wondering, could, could we discuss this whole thing in general a little more at the budget retreat? I feel like the ramifications of this could be really significant as far as what our revenue streams are going to look like. And I worry about, you know, sticker shock. It seems like waiting eight years is going to lead to sticker shock because, you know, gentrification is going to continue presumably, especially surrounding downtown, who knows where? And then after, you know, eight years instead of four years, it just seems like it's going to, the, the difference between what people are paying now, what, you know, the new value is going to be... between what people are paying now, what, you know, the new value is going to be extreme and exaggerated.
Dwayne, can you tell us what's the difference in proven tonight and waiting until we have our board retreat? What's, what's the impact that we have to consider?
I mean, that, that may be doable. I know the Department of Revenue has, has been on me about submitting the, the third step in the reappraisal standards, and that's developing a reappraisal plan. So, you know, I, I think we would, we would have to start as if we're moving forward with a 23 reappraisal tomorrow, because we're, we're behind. So, so, you know, the impact would be our, the work we would have done until the board retreat. Because we've got to, we, we've got to work on the assumption that we're doing a 23, you know, absent, absent a board vote tonight. And if that's the case, then we got to get our staff out in the field, you know, visiting these properties and talking with the homeowners and getting, getting our stuff ready to go. Not to mention, you know, the, the public relations component of the reappraisal and getting out in the community and I mean, that, the, the challenges of that today, you know, there'd be lots of, I guess we do Zoom meetings and things like that, but we, we would have to get working on it.
So what's the point of the board?
Commissioner Howerton, I do understand where Commissioner Carter's coming from. And I, I do hear you about sticker shock, but to allow these appraisals to stay stagnant right now might be of benefit to some of the poorest people in the community. It's, I would hate to be doing a reappraisal when we are still struggling with the pandemic. We are still trying to get our folks back to work. And a reappraisal in 2023 might be a worse sticker shock for some of these people who have not even started back working yet, who can't even pay their bills yet. And so I do hear you about 2028, but I, I'm, I'm not struggling right now with kicking the can on this one down to 2028, like some of the other commissioners might be. Especially knowing in 2023, they might not be able to pay what we're asking them to pay or be able to afford the taxes that we're asking them to pay in 2023. And so those are my thoughts. I've been silent because I wanted to hear the conversation. But I, I, I do, I'm on the other end of the spectrum on that one.
I'm sorry this didn't come to us at a work session, so we could have had a little longer to deliberate on it. I don't know. It just, I am feeling unreadiness. I see both sides. I, I totally understand what Commissioner Burns is saying. I, I see my side. I hear the manager and I hear you, Dwayne. You know, you, you provide a really good reasons for delay. I, I question the length of the delay a little, but, you know, you're, I'll have to defer to y'all's judgment on that. I'm just saying, I do feel unreadiness on this.
Can I offer a little compromise?
So one of the other, one of the other options, commissioners, if you want to discuss it longer, we could always move it to the end of the agenda and finish with the other two items, and you can continue to discuss it.
Madam Chair, could I just offer one kind of compromise that might help Commissioner Carter?
Go ahead.
So Dwayne, you mentioned that maybe the earliest could be 2026 instead of 2027, so just pushing it up one year. It sounds like it's not feasible to do it. For instance, what you said is the new system's going to take two years. So that automatically pushes us back to 2023, just to begin with, because we're implementing a new technology, right? And then we've got 2020, so then we're at 2023. And you said, well, it takes a good three years to implement what the new standards are, so that would get us to 2026. So just even logistically speaking, it sounds like we just even cannot do it before 2026. So I'm just wondering if we push it up to 2026, is that doable for you? And then maybe address its Commissioner Carter's concerns about how long we're waiting?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could do 26. So the reappraisal standards, they start January 1st, three years out from the reappraisal. And we could do 2026. We, that would leave us a year in the bank if something goes haywire. You know, we still have that year, but I, I think we could reasonably do 2026. I don't think that would be an issue. And we, you know, the, the way I do a reappraisal is a lot of community outreach. And that's to alleviate the sticker shock, and that's to, maybe more importantly, involve the community. I've always said that I like to do a community reappraisal. You know, it's not something the tax office does. It's something we do together with the community. So I don't want it to come as a shock for anybody. I actually have a couple ideas I want to do with this reappraisal that hopefully would involve the community to a great extent.
Would that, would that mean you would start at the beginning of 2026 or mid, mid-year or what?
That means that the reappraisal, the updated values would take effect January 1, 2026. We would start working on the reappraisal January 1, 2023, ironically. We'd start working on the reappraisal standards.
Okay. So does that answer your question, Commissioner Carter?
I mean, I'm happy to vote. I, I just feel, you know, like I would have, I, I don't feel as adequately prepped as I sometimes do. And I just, you know, maybe I should have dug a little deeper on my own, but anyway, I'm, I'm ready to vote. I, I'll vote support.
And just so we're clear, I want to jump in. Are we, because the current motion pushes it 28. We, we, are we making a motion on Commissioner Jacobs' suggestion? That's what I wanted to make sure.
Be January of 2026 rather than January 27.
Okay, so yeah, I, I like that suggestion, Commissioner Jacobs.
Okay, so do we have a motion and a second on this one? On January, that the reappraisal is postponed until January 1 of 2026?
Is that a motion, Madam Chair?
I need a motion and a second. They'll move.
A second. I'm seconding it.
Okay, it's moved improperly, moved by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Jacobs. And I need a voice for Monica.
Commissioner Alom?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Aye.
And Chair Howerton?
Aye. Approved five to zero. The next item is 210102, fiscal year 2021 update. The board is requested to receive an update on projected expenditures for FY 2021. And our general manager, Claudia Hager, will lead the discussion, who also has Susan, CFO, Keith Lane, but the director and Kathy Everett Perry. So we've got the whole gang tonight. Okay.
Hi there. Good evening. I trusted everyone as well. And Wendell will also weigh in on this. This is a continuation of our conversation a couple of weeks ago, when we gave the board a fiscal update. And this will allow us to give you a little bit more details. There were some questions asked about expenses beyond what we presented. And just to gauge, what is, what are some of those items that we know are on the horizon? And Monica, we can go to the next slide. I just shared pretty much what we'll be talking about. It's not many slides here. A quick recap of what we did, some conversations about the outstanding expenditures, information about the mid-year salary review, and some additional information on the differential in hazardous pay. And we can go to the next slide. Now, we, this is a slide from our conversations before, but just in case some may need some reminders, and we may have some who are watching who are less familiar. We limited the 2021 budget growth. And so we did that through freezing positions, except when there were some exceptions we, that were related either to COVID-19 or other compliance areas. We also froze positions in a way that was different than in prior years. We set aside a certain amount of lapse salaries to help us plan for unanticipated expenses related to COVID-19, as well as potential revenue losses. We also set aside a pool of dollars that would offset COVID-19 expenses. That was at $4.5 million. And we did defer doing capital purchases, as well as other expenditures that could wait. The manager basically shared with departments to try to hold the line, and that's a thing that we heard across the board at many entities. And we can go to the next slide. And one of the things that, you know, we talked in a little bit more detail during the last conversation about sort of where the, the revenues were. We at mid-year were collecting our revenues about 5% higher than budgeted, which was a positive thing. And we were slightly lower with our expenditures. So with that, we shared with the board, we could handle some one-time expenses and a future planned expense as it related to the some school priorities. But we also came back to the board, we, we shared with the board, we would let them know some of those operating expenses that we anticipated happening the rest of the fiscal year. As you know, we did receive dollars from the federal government and state entities to help offset costs associated with COVID. As we're now in February, some of those dollars are no longer there, and we've been planning for that. Also, there are expenses that we put on hold at the beginning of the year. And with those expenses, we are now presenting this list to the board. Many of those expenses, we knew we could use lapse dollars to cover them. In prior years, although we had natural growth, well, we would always have salary savings. The savings are at a higher percentage because of the way that we had planned, coupled with the dollars that we have received to help offset some of COVID expenses. We are hopeful that there are additional dollars that are allocated to jurisdictions with the new administration, but we also know we have to live within our means and try to plan accordingly. If you look at the list, and we will not spend a lot of time on the list, but just wanted to share some of the items that are there. There's also a memorandum that Wendell shared with the board that's also in the item that you can review later. And these are things, again, that we can talk about in upcoming meetings, as well as the upcoming board retreat for planning for the budget. The budget team right now is working with departments and fleshing out their projected cost or priorities for next year. Those, those items aren't due until a few weeks from now. But they have a good sense of, of many of the priorities that are coming down the pipeline. Although we focused on some of the major things that are happening right now that we need to address. At the retreat, Keith will give us an overview of those details and more, those items in more detail. And we'll also use work sessions to talk about them further. Some, some items that you'll see on the list are quite familiar, such as our, our dollars that we are budgeting for security or temporary personnel for, related to security and equipment for general services. As you can imagine, a lot of our expenses are due to COVID and increased cleaning costs. We actually went out to bid for additional vendors to assist with cleaning. And the bids came in significantly higher, almost three times as high as in previous years. And so although we're revisiting how we proceed with that, that is, those are some of the realities that we're dealing with, and information we'll share more with the board. Some of the items you've, you'll see on the list we've talked about before. But we had to put a placeholder on then the public safety warehouse lease, the allocation, a potential allocation for learning centers for some of the upline, the outlying months. There's the need for some equipment replacement for the sheriff's department. And then a big one that I'm sure we'll talk about at the retreat is the infrastructure needs for public health as we address the vaccine management. Not only the call center infrastructure, but also the vaccine management. And we have a, a significant placeholder for that of about $600,000. There's a small amount for cooperative extension to support our ongoing efforts with food security. And also some dollars that we're, we're showing for out-of-county costs for beds for the youth that are in our community that are in other jurisdictions. And then we have, just to be determined, some placeholders for food security, the housing security, the youth home, and RTF, those are related to our communication efforts with the business community and our residents regarding COVID. And so this is a starter list. I am sure that others may have additional items, but just wanted to, to share some of the things that we're looking at, as well as some strategies and how we handle it. Now, our, our approach has been to stay within our budget guardrails as much as possible in, in trying to address issues. We, one of the points I was going to make, and the manager probably will jump in as well, but it wasn't his note. We, we did get reaffirmation of our AAA ratings status with both standard and poor's and moody's. And we, and sold bonds today, and Susan can jump in. And I believe the rate was at 1.25%, the lowest ever that we've ever had. And probably one of the lowest in the state, and Susan can correct me on that. So we are real excited about that also. So for, for instance, if we budgeted that, the, the rate that we would have to pay for the 3%. And usually, we, we, we are a little bit higher in what we budget. And it's now at 1.25%. That cost savings helps us as well. So the way the board has given us guidance, and we followed those policies, as well as a lot of other factors, made us very attractive with the sale. And Susan, you can weigh in on that.
Yes, it was, the sale today was amazing. I couldn't have asked for it to have gone any better or any more favorably for Durham County. The county achieved, as Claudia just mentioned, an amazing geo bond sale with the total cost, total interest cost of only 1.25%. And, you know, the finance team, working with our partners, you know, the underwriters, our financial advisors, the financing institutions, structured this offering, achieving what the LGC has reported to the county as the lowest interest cost known amongst its current records. That is just awesome.
I think you were excited.
Very excited, yes.
Wow.
Wow. Wow.
Historic.
Yes, historic. Historic.
Just to put it in some real simple and plain English for the board, obviously, we have to have these difficult conversations with bond rating agencies and do a lot of work. work going through the analysis in order to prepare for those conversations. But when you talk about 200 basis points on where we could have potentially been, 200 basis points is a whole lot of real money. And so, you know, these are the kinds of strategies that we employ, but more importantly, exercise in terms of keeping us financially solvent and putting us in the position to be able to do some things that we otherwise would not be able to afford to do. So I just want to make sure that, you know, everyone who's listening understands what a feat this is in respect to our ability to pull this off here in Durham County at a time when, yes, we are in a recessed economy and a time when other jurisdictions across the state have gone to the rating agencies, to the LGC, and requested, you know, debt issuance for certain amounts and were only given, you know, a third or a fourth of what they requested. And so this is big for Durham, and I'm just proud of the staff and the work that we've all been able to do over the last several months in preparation for a rating meeting that we had just a couple of weeks ago. And as I've shared with you in earlier meeting this month, we have another conversation coming up in a couple of months to issue some pretty significant school debt, and we want to be well positioned to come back and tell a very similar story.
And it's, it just showed in not just the ratings, but the sale today, how fiscally strong Durham is. And all that goes back to managing toward our policies, achieving our goals, very conservative budgeting during a time of COVID. So it was great. So I'm glad I could give you some good news tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. Yeah, we appreciate it. All right. I will, thank you. I, I will move to the next slide. One of the areas that was put on hold at the beginning, on the onset of the pandemic back in April of 2020, when the manager sort of outlined a framework for the budget development, was that the merit raise, rate increases would not be something we would do for 2021. And again, a strategy that most jurisdictions took on. At this time, we're not going to reinstitute the merit increases. However, there's a recommendation to institute a new leave for this year that will allow employees that have been hired as of January 11, 2021 to receive three weeks' leave. This leave would not expire, and the way it is accumulated and the way it accounted for, it will not have a fiscal impact to the balance sheet. And we can go to the next slide.
Claudia, let me just weigh in on a couple of those things. If you go back to the earlier slide, Monica. Missioners, the reason that this is so extremely important, as you've heard me say before, we did real well through the mid-year in terms of keeping our revenue where it needs to be, but also managing our expenditures. By the same token, we've got five more months to get through. And while I would like nothing more than to be able to reinstitute merit increases, there are considerable unknowns that could be in the pipeline. And in order for us to manage through that process, it's easier for us to continue to move forward with great caution. And so that's the reason that I believe that it's in our best interest to, again, not do merit increases between now and the end of fiscal year. The second part of that recommendation, as it relates to the leave for the employees, Claudia talked about a number of other jurisdictions utilizing this as sort of a benefit to employees. While I want to do this, and I think it's perhaps the appropriate thing to do, I want to be perfectly transparent with you and say that, again, we had a number of vacant positions up through the mid-year, which in essence means that we have a lot of staff and a lot of different departments that's doing double time. You heard the public health director on earlier talking about, you stress that, you know, his staff and the nursing staff and others were under. That's across the enterprise where we have people working. And as such, these are the same people that we will be relying on in order to get us through the point that we can get all of our citizens vaccinated. And so while we are granting, or while I would recommend granting this leave, I also want to say that I want staff to be able to take advantage of the leave opportunity as well, because my concern for the organization is, we do have a lot of people who are reaching burnout. And, you know, it's one thing to grant employees leave and put it on the books. It's another thing for them to have the ability to take it. And if Rod only has, you know, a handful of people, or if emergency management only has the same people who are doing the work around the clock, if the sheriff only has, you know, the same, you know, folks in the, in the jail who to do, who does detention officer work, or the same deputies who's pounding the pavement day in and day out, and he's got to have them there, you know, it can be a challenge, even though we are granting this leave. And so I wanted to point that out and be fully transparent, because I want to see employees get the breaks and the relief and the respite that they need. But I also want you to understand that when duty calls, there are some in the, inside the organization that may not have that luxury.
And this is Susan. To clarify regarding the third bullet, this leave would not be considered vacation. So there's no accrue, which means there's no balance sheet impact. If the employee were to leave before they utilized the vacation or this leave, it would be bad.
Right. So, so I have a quick question. So just to, so that, does that, that means if an employee takes a day off, they just get paid the regular salary? Is that what you're saying? Yes, they, they would use this leave instead of using their vacation leave. And so as Wendell shared, many have been in, in that category of, of just having worked a lot over the last 12 months or 11 months. And outside of COVID, we've typically been able to do a cost of living adjustment or a merit adjustment over the years. Many jurisdictions have, or many places have used this as a way to do a leave or a way to show appreciation to the staff and it not cause an impact from a cost perspective to the organization. Now, there's always the coordination that will happen anytime people take off work, but that would be a part of the normal standard practice that departments do in managing it. Claudia, this is Wendy. I don't understand that sentence still. I don't understand how adding an extra week of vacation doesn't have fiscal impact if it's going to be a paid week. I still don't understand that.
Sure. So they didn't accrue any, accrue anything, like they can't take it as a payout?
Right, they can't take it as a payout. That is correct. So, so for instance, now, if, if a person, a person can accumulate up to 240 hours, right? Okay. And once it gets above that number, it then rolls into sick time. Right. So it's still a liability that can, has to be addressed, for instance. And, and so with this leave, and this is something that the state did often too, they used to call it the bonus leave.
Yeah, I got 80 hours right now.
Yeah. And so, so instead of using your regular leave, you would use that leave, because what we're hearing from a lot of employees is that, okay, I can't take my, I can't take my vacation time because I'm having to work. And then because of COVID, I'm still having to, or just because of the environment right now, it's tough to go anywhere, but there's that desire to still have the leave to be available for them and not to lose it and it rolls to sick as well. There are many pros and cons to it, and we can flesh this out further.
But to further clarify, sorry, Claudia, I didn't mean to interrupt, but to further clarify, when we say no balance sheet impact means there's no accrue, because when, if the employee leaves and has taken two weeks, we don't pay them out like we do pay accrued vacation.
That's right.
Just like we don't, we don't pay accrued sick leave. We're not liable for that if they choose to leave the county.
But this also doesn't roll to sick.
That's correct, because then, then that would have an impact toward retirement. So there's no impact even on retirement because it would go to sick.
Are there, if there are no more questions on this slide, Monica, we can go to the next one. We, we wanted to share with the board some highlights about the profiles of employees that have, well, not the profiles of the employees, but some of the exposures we've had with COVID-19, as we talk about in the next slide, about hazardous and differential pay. Since the pandemic started, we've had over 420, well, we've had 421 workplace exposures of employees that have had to be quarantined because of being exposed to COVID-19. Of that number, there were 49 positive results, and unfortunately, we've had one fatality. And so that, some of this data has been asked about before, so we did include that. And Monica, we can go to the next slide. The, during the last meeting as well, it was asked for us to share thoughts about options for differential pay and how, and if we were going to move forward. The manager is, has presented two options to include reading stating the differential pay consistent with what we did in the past, which is a targeted pay for actual hour of work at the 10%. And the second option was looking at it at a 5% level, which is lower, which would, would mean half of the amount. The difference between the two is that the first option aligns with our pre-COVID policy. And so the potential for it being reimbursed is, is still on the table. We've not heard back yet about the decision on, on our numbers. The second one would not be consistent with our current policy, so we're not totally clear what that designation would be as far as FEMA reimbursing it, because it would be different than our pre-COVID policy. There were other options that we did evaluate, but it still fell into the similar situation of what options were available that we could do that would allow us the maximum reimbursement. For any other scenarios, we could absorb these costs as we've been doing to date within the current budget. And, and the hurriedness of putting it together, didn't have my little bullets together on the slide to show the percentage that the differential pay was to the current budget. And Susan, can you remind us of those numbers?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I think before, when we looked at the percentage of these, so our budget is, is about, our operating budget's close to $500 million.
That's correct.
And of that amount, we've expended about 2.3 million in the current year
That's correct.
for differential pay. And basically what we're seeing of the total budget and what we're projecting, we can absorb this expense and still meet targets of what we're planning to meet with our year-end reserve projections.
Yes, because included in the six-month analysis would have been the, all the COVID temp wages, including the differential wages, when we did the six-month analysis and we were trending lower than we did six months from the previous fiscal year, for the first six months.
That's correct.
And also, I spoke with the compliance manager, and option two would definitely be a post-COVID revision of the policy. And remember FEMA said no revisions post-COVID should be reimbursable by FEMA. So that would put the entire 5% at risk of being totally county funded. So I'm just making that, be aware of that, because I did have that conversation with our compliance manager this afternoon.
And Monica, we can advance to the next slide. As far as next steps, this is a slide similar to what we shared before. We're continuing to evaluate our expenditures and looking at what's most pressing. We started some of that look last, I guess, a couple of weeks ago after the meeting, the mid-year fiscal update. At the budget retreat, we'll have better information. And as I shared, the budget department is working with various areas to figure out what are some of the most pressing issues for next year we need to look at, as well as if there are some other issues that may bubble up beyond the list that I just talked about. We'll not go through the other bullets, but our retreat is in, it seems like a few days. And from the conversations, though, we may need a 20-day retreat. But, but what we've done in the past is we've tried to optimize the retreat dates plus the work sessions and the work meeting dates to make sure we cover the policy items that the board desires ahead of the budget development. But we can always figure out ways to make sure the questions are asked and we cover those policy issues. And I believe, Monica, that's my last slide. I'm sorry, my voice is, is leaving me. And if we can entertain any questions, and I know Keith and Susan and Paffey are on the line as well. Ms. Jacobs? Well, thank you. I know it's late. It's, I know our, our chair is going to remind us what time it is. So I would really suggest that we continue this discussion at our, at our board retreat, and we may need even more another board retreat. But I, I know, I appreciate getting this information, but most of it, a lot of it came at like five, and I had a meeting from five to six, so I actually haven't even gotten to read all the documents. But I think what would be helpful is, there were some things that were requested, actually, in our directive at the January 25th meeting, if we could get that information. And then also just related to thinking about expenses, there were lots of big question marks on the community-related expenses. So, I mean, you know, thinking about homeless population, housing, food, one thing that wasn't on there is our small businesses. So I think really trying to get our heads around, you know, what are some expenses that we may be looking at?
So I think really trying to get our heads around, you know, what are some expenses that we may be looking at? And I know, I guess also again, we don't have time tonight, but looking at that $4.2 million that was set aside, that there's some reference to trying to use some of that now. But because that was over $2 million, just I saw on that chart that you just showed, was just mostly internal county stuff. So we've got the internal county stuff and then we've got the community stuff. And then for the hazard pay, again, the stuff that was in the January 25th directive, but also just trying to understand what is the projected cost from whatever you're thinking about for the start date to the end date? What is that cost that we're really looking at? Because again, my concern is the big picture of how we're going to have money for all of these things. So I think at the retreat, it will be good to have time to get, get into all of that, into those numbers. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I weigh in on that comment for a quick second?
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Commissioner Jacobs is asking for costs that we don't know what they are. And I don't want to give anybody the impression that we do. We have said all along that between now and the end of the fiscal year, there could potentially be some uncertainties around what's coming down the pipe. That will remain true until we are in fact confronted with it. I am happy to say that you heard at the beginning of this presentation that we did a really good job in respect to revenue collections. We also did a very good job in terms of managing the expense side of the ledger. We underspent, we overcollected, which created a good formula for us to be able to grow that fund balance that, that, you know, Susan talked about in some of the earlier presentations. Irrespective, we're going to continue to, irrespective of the uncertainty, we're going to continue to manage through this process, this fiscal process, the way that we have in the past. And I'm optimistic that, you know, when we reach the June 30th date and begin the next fiscal year, you know, we'll be financially solvent and well-positioned. So what we're talking about doing here for these employees potentially that are working in this environment, and you can see how much of our workforce has been impacted by this virus. I have, you know, no, no reservations about recommending that we continue to recognize the efforts of these employees and demonstrating that we do care enough about them to make certain that we can give them a 10% hazard pay. Thank you.
So, so Mr. Manager, normally when, at our budget retreat, we ask all the commissioners to send in a list of whatever their priorities are to be discussed on the, in the budget. And knowing that we, we won't have the time to do all the things that all five commissioners come up with. Are we doing that same thing this time?
Yes, Madam Chair, that is the idea. Obviously, we have a couple of three policy papers or policy discussions that we will perhaps be bringing forth along with a long-term economic forecast for the next 18 to 24 months. And that will be with the assistance of some local economists. And so, yes, that's how we're.
So we can, so we can, we can list those as the board, we can list those. And then we'll have to look at what we can get on the agenda because we only have a day and not even a half a day, a day and part of a day to get this done. So, all right, commissioners, we have one more item on the list. Are we, are there any other questions on this item or can we move ahead? You have a question, Commissioner Carter?
Yes, thank you. Just thinking about the hazard pay and staff that are in harm's way. Is the proposal to give all staff hazard pay? Or is there some subset of the staff, the ones that are the most, most frontlined? Or, I just wasn't clear and it can be next time, it can be next time we discuss it.
Yeah, but the simple answer to the question is yes, all of those folks who are in, who are working in a hazardous environment that are obviously subject to, you know, being infected by the virus. And we have a lot of those employees and they're across the enterprise.
Yeah, so probably fewer than last time or, or not?
So it's, it may be fewer by virtue of the fact that we've had a number of people to leave and take other positions. But, and we haven't filled vacancies completely across the enterprise. But the employees who are at the wastewater treatment plant, they're still, they're still exposed to the virus. The employees who effectively are doing screenings at doors at all of our facilities, they're still exposed to the virus. The employees that work in the jail, the employees that, that the sheriff has under his supervision. The list goes on, so.
And.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Carter, when being on the board of the health board, the number of people that had, had resigned or left have been, is very high. Check with Rod, the numbers, the numbers high.
High turnover rates?
Yeah.
I bet. It would be great if we could maybe, I think you all gave us this before, just a list of positions that you consider high, highest risk. And I'd really be curious to know what percent of our staff have been vaccinated and, you know, maybe will be vaccinated to help also, you know, minimize risk. And I'd be curious to know, you know, what, what would a cost of living increase have been? You know, just thinking about, thinking about that a little more and how that would benefit everyone across the organization, of course, not at the 10% level. But I'm assuming the 10, I'm assuming the 10% hazard pay would be for a subset of our, you know, staff, whereas a cost of living or merit increase would, would be something for everyone. So I don't know, I just would be interested in those different costs.
So you want a cost of living estimate and a merit increase estimate?
No, just one, I guess, whatever is typical. Usually we have, it feels like, it always to me feels like a cost of living increase, but we call it a merit increase.
So we'll do the merit, Claudia.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Burns, you got this on me?
How will be very quick. I'm thankful for the, the points that Commissioner Carter brought up. And I'm thankful to Claudia and for the rest of the staff for bringing back the information that we requested. And I do look forward to the retreat. I just will say, as somebody who does work every day, and that is not a shock to anybody on here who does not work, who works every day on a pandemic program, burnout is very real. Very real. And I'm unmoved on my feeling about how I think our employees should be treated. That being said, I recognize that in the event we have to take the hard line and everyone cannot get what we are requesting, that the commissioners on this call be prepared to do what needs to be done for the most vulnerable. And I know the staff might disagree with me, you know, you have a mutiny on your hands if you decide to give some to one and give some to the other one. We did not get elected to be, to be liked, maybe some of y'all did, I didn't. We got elected to make some hard choices. So I'm asking you all to dig deep and think back to, and do not take this the wrong way. Think back to when you worked and think back to the days you had 15 and 20-hour days. There are some people on this call, you call me at eight and nine o'clock and I'm still on Zoom meetings. You call me at Saturday and Sunday and I'm still on Zoom meetings because I'm trying to make sure people are not getting evicted. I'm trying to make sure people's lives are on. When I get off of this call, I will be doing that work. So I stand shoulder to shoulder, the same way some of you all did with the teachers and I did. I stand shoulder to shoulders with the staff. And I've been to the offices, I've been to the sheriff's department, I've been to public health. I have seen the unshaven faces, I have seen the tired eyes. And so I'm just going to say, I don't know what we are going to do, but the same way you all had no problem watching some of us take abuse on some other hard decisions, I'm saying to you, I have no problem standing shoulder to shoulder with you all, taking some abuse about what we have to do to move forward. We have saved the money. We have, again, I said in another meeting, you know, process and progress don't have to be mutually exclusive. There's a reason why we have a AAA bond rating, these people have worked very hard. And there's no budget retreat that's going to change my mind about that. And so, thank you, that's all I had to say, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Burns. And, you know, I, I would hate to think that any one of us don't appreciate the staff that's working for us and put their lives at, at risk every day. And not just their lives, but the children, the families. So we will have that conversation later. If there are no other questions, we don't have to take, there's no action on this item, I don't believe. We will move on to item 21. Thanks so much Claudia, Susan and Mr. Manager, we'll move on to 21-0103. Proposal for Durham County partnership with Kate's Corner and Durham Housing Authority. And who's going to, who's the staff person on this item?
So, because Kate Goodwin is on with us, Madam Chair. At the, well, late last week, we had an opportunity to hear from Kate and subsequently, right around the time we were preparing the agenda, subsequently discovered that there were about 85 kids that were in many of our most challenged neighborhoods that subsequently was in need of the same types of services that had been rendered to obviously the kids who attend the Y, City U and other places. And Ms. Goodwin obviously had been working in those neighborhoods and providing that service. And so as such, she has submitted to us a proposal and will talk to us about those kids, those particular neighborhoods and housing, their housing authority neighborhoods, to be quite frank. And to talk about some needs that are there that we perhaps need to address as it relates to learning centers.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Goodman?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Greetings, County Manager and Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present again. As we have been doing this work for a few months now, you all know that Kate's Corner is currently serving eating amazing children in the Durham area. We provide distance learning support as well as after-school care. And employ nine great staff members who are four NCCU students, one grad student, one Durham Tech student who is a senior in nursing, and then one junior, I'm sorry, one senior from the Jordan High School. Many of our employees are very excited about how we can service and what is coming about in us being able to be, I guess, a bridge to gap some of the disparities that we're seeing as COVID has, you know, kind of disrupted our normal lives, especially those of our children. Our goal in this proposal is to serve an additional 35 children. Our locations, as the County Manager has mentioned, are in partnership with Durham Housing Authority. These children were identified by DPS and Durham Housing Authority as not being served in an adequate manner. And then they did an in-house survey of the parents who would be interested in getting the additional help. So we were able to provide this service for them. There's no overhead cost, DHA is, being able to provide some support in that manner. We're working with the downtown Durham Inc. to locate a location for our children who are in the McDougal Terrace community because of the fact that their community, their community building is being revamped. So I've been in contact with Durham Tech. We've gone and looked at a few rooms that are might, going to be a great choice for us to be able to facilitate programs in. So I'm very proud of those partnerships in addition to some of the partnerships that we've been working wholeheartedly with to try to provide this much-needed service. And so, yes, we're coming to ask for that additional support. And in the breakdown, it kind of gives for a seven and nine-week duration of time. We were hopefully trying to get started on today, but we'll need to push that back to the 15th to get the decisions and also get those spaces solidified.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goodman. Questions, Commissioners? Questions or comments? Commissioner Burns?
I noticed you said, and I do know that the multipurpose, well, one, thank you for this. I brought it up when we first started having these conversations about the, the learning centers, how transportation was an issue. So I'm happy, I know that Commissioner Carter worked with some folks at, with the school board and I talked with some folks. So I'm just happy that we have some locations that are walkable for our students. So I appreciate you wanting to take on, take on that responsibility. Now, you say right now something's being revamped, but on the information that we have, we say, you say that all three of the locations are going to be free. Are we, do you still assume that when you work with downtown Durham Incorporated or when you work with the, with Durham Tech, that this location for McDougal Terrace will also not have a cost?
Oh, it will not. We, we entered into that understanding first thing in the conversation. So Durham Tech is very excited about being a part of this, of course, and helping the community.
Great, great. Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. And Kate, I just really want to applaud you for, I mean, not only what you're already doing, but then taking the next step and, you know, making all the arrangements to do this, taking on this as well. So really appreciate what you're doing for families and children in our community. I just want to clarify because in one of our documents, and I was confused about it because it referred, referred to Club Boulevard, but then afterwards it referred to Oxford Manor. So this is, it's not, this is Oxford Manor, right? Not, this is not Club Boulevard, right?
Yeah, the difference was that we realized that COVID testing was happening. Ms. Jacobs from DHA was unaware that there was a testing facility. So we had to change it around to the locations that we would be able to have feasible. So yes, there is a difference.
Okay, so it's at Oxford Manor and then Hoover Road, those onsite? And then the kids at McDougal Terrace would go over to Durham Tech? Okay, is there transportation then or are they going to, I mean, I know they could possibly walk, but.
We're working on transportation as weather is not permitting. Literally haven't gotten that transportation piece in place where I'm currently has presented a lot of problems for our residents who walk from families moving forward or different places. So it would be necessary and it would also help make sure that, you know, in a timely manner, everyone got to the location to get logged in on time, et cetera.
Right, okay. And was there any need at Corn Moss? Not that I'm trying to give you more work, but I'm just thinking about Cornwallis. There are a lot of kids over there. I mean, was there an assessment?
Cornwallis, there is a, a conversation going on between DHA and the Cornwallis Community Center because no one was using it at the time. So I haven't gotten an update back from them. I could not get it in time to even put it on the proposal. But there was a big concern about the bandwidth and the experiences that they were having in all the communities. But that was one of the ones that had a lot of those, those issues. So I would have to, you know, hear back from DHA, but we did identify that there is a need. We just need to be able to find a location that it would work in.
Okay, and just to clarify, are we being asked right now to approve the $104,125? And then you'll come back if you do? And then you'll come back if you do need the additional funding? Because during, I know it's my understanding that you're asking Durham Public Schools Foundation for that second amount?
They have a question too.
Yeah, so clarity is, is that the question that was put on, um, the proposal because whereas Durham School, um, Public School Foundation will oversee the cost for tuition for the fourth quarter, uh, at schools, they will not cover those children who are going to, uh, the community charter schools. Um, and since they don't, a number of our children go to the community charter schools, so we would be less those numbers, uh, in, in that, um, in that proposal. And we don't turn any of our students away long as, you know, they fulfill the requirement you all had for them to fulfill fiscally, you know, and situationally. I, I don't turn away, uh, individuals, um, for that purpose. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, I did reach out to the charter schools and ask for their support for their specific students. Um, I haven't heard back from them as of yet. I know that community car, charter community has a meeting on Thursday, but it's, right now, I'm asking to make sure I have coverage, to make sure all of our students that we serve have, uh, what is necessary.
So just to clarify, is the, is the 104,125 dollars from up until March 26th?
Correct.
Okay, so we can move forward with approving that and then you can always come back to us when you figure out what's going on with the charter schools and the Durham Public Schools Foundation. Thank you, thank you.
I, I did have that follow-up, but we don't even have that direction, do we? I know the direction on the meeting was just to be briefed. So are we actually even making a motion tonight?
So, Mr. Manager, are we asked, being asked to do the whole, the 238? Um, or why would we need to ask her to come back again?
Because DPS might fund them?
DPS Foundation will not fund children who go to charter schools. That isn't, they mandated that across the board and they were very, um, Ms. Gonzalez was very clear about not, um, supporting those students. Uh, DPS Foundation said that their monies will go only for DPS students.
Uh, so I guess my question is, is there a process that we can, we can approve the full amount with the contingency that if DPS does fund, um, the 133, then we do not have to expend the money? Is there some type of a process rather than having it?
We, we could, I mean, it, it really boils down to whatever the board's desire is. We could either do the 104 tonight and get that approved and, um, Ms. Goodman could come back, uh, once she's completed those other conversations. Or you could do the full, um, 238 contingent upon the, um, agreements being made with those other respective entities, um, to get her through the nine weeks. Uh, and she could come back to us, um, close to the end of that seven-week support and tell us where she, uh, stands.
I had another quick follow-up because I'm looking at the 133. I know that is 133 because it's two additional weeks, uh, in seven. And I hear what you're saying about DPS not funding any charter schools. My question is, uh, is, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure my math's not off, that entire 85 is not charter students. So would we not just be paying the difference on what they wouldn't cover for those additional nine weeks?
Right.
Right, so it wouldn't be the whole 133?
It would be, it would be, so, uh, what I'm also asking is for the students who are currently in my 80 number, who are not covered, plus the additional children. And I, and I don't know those numbers of the 85 that are, um, I don't know. Percentages, yeah. Um, so I would, I absolutely just want to be able to have it covered. We had some conversation with the charter schools. If they came and said, hey, we got our children, don't worry about it, then of course I would update you on, let you know that those costs are not needed.
Okay, what's the, but, uh, any other, other questions, concerns? And what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I, I would move that we move forward with funding through March 26th and it just sounds like we just need to get the, the final numbers tweaked on what additional amount may be needed. But, um, you know, I think we just need that final information. So I would move that we move forward with the first request and then you'll just come back to us when you have more, you know, definitive numbers, uh, for the rest of it. Um, and so that would be the, I would move forward that we fund the 104,125 dollars uh, for the, um, Durham Housing Authority sites in partnership with Kate's Corner. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second for two, for a motion for the 104, 1, 125, um, to cover through March 26th. Uh, it's been moved by Commissioner Jacobs, second by Commissioner Burns. Um, voice vote?
Commissioner Alom?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye, and thanks to Kate's Corner for this important work.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Aye, and you may be coming back with Cornwallis too.
Right.
And Chair Howerton?
Aye. So passes five to zero. Um, Commissioner, that is the last item on our agenda. Um, I've made a re, motion to recess meeting until, do we have a date by when we need to recess? We had one item that was a, uh.
On the economic development?
Yes, yes ma'am, Chair Howerton, that item can be approved at the next regular session meeting on the 22nd, so it will be on that agenda.
Okay, so we just have the, to adjourn then? Or recess it until then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And motion?
Uh, so moved, uh, make a, I'll make a motion that we recess on the economic development, uh, public hearing till the 22nd.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Commissioner Burns and second by, um, Commissioner Alom, that we recess the meeting until the 20, 23rd?
22nd.
22nd. Okay, all in, and we've had, we've done the ayes. Did we call it dual call vote, voice call, voice vote?
Commissioner Alom?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Aye.
And Chair Howerton?
Aye, we are recessed.
Good night, friends.
Good night.
And adjourn the meeting for tonight, Commissioner.
Adjourn, we have to adjourn.
We have to recess and then adjourn?
Yeah, we just recessed the public hearing, we got to adjourn.
Now we need a motion to adjourn.
I don't know, hold on, Commissioner Carter, you want to go get something to eat? Yes, my bad. Just said last time, you want to.
Commissioner Carter, Mr. Carter, Commissioner Carter moved to adjourn.
A second.
Another second.
Uh, Commissioner Alom, second, uh, and a voice vote.
Commissioner Alom?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Well, yeah, aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Yes.
And Chair Howerton?
She's hesitating.
Approve, approve, five to zero, we are adjourned.